Ready.
Ms. Niemeyer.
Um, yes, hi. Um, my name is Monica Niemeyer and I have here Sylvia Ramos. Um, and we're a part of Rotary and we're here just to speak to you briefly about Cinco de Mayo. And tell you guys, um, to formally invite you and I'm just gonna casually nonchalantly get her closer to the mic because she's stepping away. And, um, just invite you guys. We hope you guys come. Cinco de Mayo is on May 5th, in case you just didn't know. And we have a lot of things planned. It's our first year doing it. We're really surprised. We're awarded by the LTAC Committee, so thank you. We're hoping to use it as a fundraiser for our scholarship program. Along with, um, we are also a sponsor for, um, the swim team. Along with other, some other programs and projects that we, um, look forward to doing. We've tried to keep it in, kind of in line with what it is before, but maybe a few changes. Uh, Sylvia here is in charge of the, the Chados, right? And, uh, helping out with the music as well. Um, could you tell a little bit about the bands? Because that's where I'm president, so I just, I'm delegating at this point. It's fun. So, go ahead Sylvia.
Well, good evening. Um, my name is Sylvia Ramos and, um, it's last year we had the privilege to, um, take over and help, um, the city with the Charles since, um, the previous sponsor who would help us, um, the decided to go elsewhere. So we came in just with days before and, and picked it up and, um, we were able to get, um, some Spanish marketing and just, uh, it's our thirty-sixth anniversary and it's an event that brings in ton of money to our small businesses. From the gas stations to the Safers of the Worlds, to the Fiesta's, to the Bon Pops, um, small businesses, everybody benefits. And for thirty-six years, uh, we've been as a community, where there has been different organizations who have taken over this, um, responsibility because it's a huge responsibility. And where we partner up with every organization out here, especially the police department who do an amazing job. It's an event Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and it's put together with a bunch of volunteers. Uh, the Char competition alone brings over, um, you know, uh, different horses, but different organizations from, um, the horse competition is very, very known. And it's, um, something that the Char, um, the dancing horses, a lot of people like enjoyed to see. There's carnivals and then the different kinds of bands, but our time's up, but I just wanted to invite everybody.
And, and yes, um, and we're also going to be having a lot of different vendors. I think we've tried to bring in a couple of different food items. And, um, Sylvia brought up a great point. We really want to say thank you to the police department, the fire department. Um, the, uh, city works, they've really been integral. I mean, you guys really make it easy because you've been doing it for so long that you just help us fill in those gaps and make it smooth. So we're excited to have a community, um, event that's fun, brings in some smiles, and let's be honest, brings in some tax dollars. So thank you so much for your support and we plan to give a follow-up, um, at the next meeting. I believe that's May thirteenth. And one second left. Look at that. All right.
Guys timed that perfectly. Well done. And ironically, or unironically, we have a proclamation for Cinco de Mayo to read the record this evening as well, so. All right, next name on my list is Aviciana Aguiwe.
Hmm, Emma.
Alicia. Hi, I'm Alicia. I live on Harrison Avenue here in Sunnyside. After speaking with you at the previous council meeting on April eighth, I have since looked into the records of last year's council meetings to better understand the concerns that led to the decision to prohibit chickens in our city. After thorough consideration, I believe these concerns can be effectively managed. One major concern raised was the potential problem of chickens becoming another loose animal issue in the city. Similar to our loose dog problem. However, it is important to note that chickens are instinctively cautious creatures. They aren't unlikely to roam far from homes due to their natural fear of predators, including loose dogs. Chicken owners are also vigilant about securing their chickens in fenced yards to protect them, which would naturally contain them in their designated safe areas. Another issue highlighted was the risk of parasites and the transmission of germs between humans and chickens. This is certainly a valid concern. However, the Department of Health and the CDC provide clear guidelines on lowering these risks. Simple measure, measures such as a proper hand washing and maintaining good hygiene practices, which have become second nature to us since the COVID-19 pandemic. Can significantly minimize these risks? We have all learned the importance of hygiene in preventing the spread of diseases. Skills that are directly linked to caring for chickens safely. Lastly, there was a concern regarding the accidental purchase of roosters, which could lead to noise complaints and other disturbances. This issue can be easily addressed through the availability of pre-sex chickens, which are offered by our farm stores. This allows chicken owners to purchase female chicks exclusively, avoiding the complications associated with an unanticipated roosters. In conclusion, I urge the council to reconsider the current stance on banning chickens in our city. Right now, the only people who are, who have chickens are those who are not following the rules. If we allow them with guidelines, everyone can enjoy the benefits of having chickens. Like fresh eggs, pest control, fertilizer, and learning how to take care of animals. Thank you for considering this matter once more.
Thank you for coming here again. Um, just for your information, it is on the agenda for our next regular meeting on May thirteenth. So I invite you to come back and listen to the discussion on that. All right, next name on my list is Hector. I'm gonna say Larios. Did I get your name correct, sir? Awesome.
Good evening. My name's Hector Larios. Um, I'm here to talk a little bit about the plan proposal for the pump track. Um, I mean, honestly, I believe that before we start any kind of new projects at our current, you know, our current parks, we should update what's already there. Um, you know, I, uh, soccer fields, you know, soccer has grown a lot in the community over the past two years. Um, we, throughout Sunnyside and Grandview, um, we have well over, I want to say maybe three thousand soccer players and they're all between the ages of four to fourteen. Um, and it's, it kinda, it's kinda unfair that we don't really have anywhere to take these kids to go and play, you know? Um, we have, we have fields, but there's no goals. We have fields that aren't marked. We have fields that aren't maintained. You know, there's a lot of fields with potholes, you know? Um, just kinda makes it unsafe for all these kids running around and, um, I mean, it's, it's kinda unfair, you know? We have the baseball fields over at Sunny View Park that really don't get used a whole lot. Especially just, uh, because they're out there in the country, you know, going, going out towards Grandview. Um, we have baseball fields over at South Hill Park, but there's no soccer fields out there, you know, for that side of the community. Um, we usually have to go to the schools to go use their fields and it's kinda hard when there's, uh, school sports going on and stuff like that. And then, um, I also believe that our current Parks and Recs youth plans aren't targeting the right age groups. Um, we have a lot of youth in this community that is at risk. But us as a community and the community center isn't allowing them to go and sign up, uh, sign up for sports. You know, they, they're only allowing, I believe it's four or five-year-olds up to like nine or ten-year-olds to play T-ball, play soccer, stuff like that. Um, I mean, I, I feel like there's a lot of changes that need to happen, especially with Parks and Recs. And I think the supervisor should be here. You know, maybe at least at one of these meetings, so she can, she can understand where we're coming from as a community. So, but that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Martha Osorio.
Hello. Good afternoon. Um, I am also here for the same topic. I think our community is growing with soccer. I myself just started a little team for three-year-olds. And it's very hard. Um, we really don't have anywhere to practice. Majority of the schools have been fenced, which I'm very thankful for. I know why they've been fenced, but I just think it would be great to be able to open more local spots for these kids to be able to practice, to play. Um, for indoor, we only have one school that allows us to play indoor. So we have tournaments. It's like we're super crowded. You know, we're all in there together. So I guess my ask is if we can open more schools, more buildings, fix our buildings, so we can have, you know, sports for the kids instead of them being out there doing what they're not supposed to be doing. This is great for the community. We have grown a lot. Um, like I said, we're starting more teams and more and more and more. We have a Grandview person who just started her own league and it's great that she's trying to get the community involved. It's just, we don't have anywhere to go. So it would be a good idea, um, Parks and Recs to get involved, you know, for us just to grow as a community, get all these kids involved. Um, and just have a place to go, um, as well restrooms. We don't have restrooms out there. When we do have practices, it's more like ten teams right now at Sierra Vista that are taking over. Um, so it's just a matter of opening hopefully the schools to the public, the indoor for the outdoor field, um, getting them marked as well and having more equipment for the kids to be out there to be able to enjoy. So that is my ask for, you know, the city is to help us out. Help us out, you know, let us give these kids something to do after school, on the weekends. Get them out of doing bad things that they're not supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a quick comment on that. The, uh, the city has, uh, authority over its own property and we have one facility that we are talking about, um, strengthening the walls on the inside for a little bit of indoor soccer. But please keep in mind, the city has no authority over any of the school properties. Um, they have their own board and they own the property separate from the city. So we cannot tell the schools to open up any other facilities. Uh, we just don't have that authority. But we have talked about certain things that we can do, uh, for indoor soccer. But we currently have one facility that we can upgrade a little bit in order to play indoor soccer and we don't have any other facilities at this time for that. So. Okay, next name is Adrian Mancenas.
Hello, everybody. My name's Adrian Mancenas. I'm also, uh, concerned with the child development in our community. I started coaching a team called Mobos FC, as you could tell by my sweater. Uh, we had about twenty-four kids when I started, right after the, uh, Cinco de Mayo shooting. And I believe it's something that, uh, the kids need in our community, a lot of discipline and something that can bring, uh, the kids as well as their parents together. Uh, we started off with about twenty-four kids in the club. Uh, this was in two thousand and, um, twenty-two, and we bumped up to a hundred and twenty-nine kids just in the club alone. And that spans kids that are between the ages of four years old to twelve-year-olds. We have fourteen coaches. We have two directors. We have an accountant who's helping us make sure that everything is paid for. And we participate in the Lower Valley Soccer League as well as the Mid Valley Soccer League and the Grandview Soccer League. This is just our club. In those leagues, there are thirty-four teams for the Lower Valley Soccer League, which is five hundred and ten players. There's thirty-six teams in the Mid Valley Youth Soccer League, which is four hundred and, five hundred and forty players, excuse me. Twenty-eight teams in the Grandview Youth Soccer League, which is four hundred and twenty players. With, for a total of fourteen hundred and seventy players between the ages of four years old and twelve years old. That's not accounting for high school teams. That's not accounting for kids that are just practicing with those teams. I also volunteer for the Parks and Recs, uh, youth soccer program that you guys were trying to put together. And I'm actually looking at that position that you guys are trying to open up because I do have a lot of free time and I am devoted to helping the kids in our community. I'm just tired of the violence that's going on and it's time for the adults to step up and do something about it. And for you guys to make sure that you're visually observing what's going on. Um, I'm tired of the name-calling of our community from other places, uh, known as a violent community or a gang-ridden community. And just so that you guys understand that we are adults here. Uh, we do have a lot of adults that have volunteered just for our club alone. And, uh, we're, we're coming hot and we're willing to, uh, come and help the kids out as much as we can. And, um, also I oppose the, uh, bump track, uh, movement that's going on right now because I don't think that really goes with what we're trying to do in the community and what the community interests are. Um, I believe that we can have money better spent on, uh, developing some soccer fields and it would actually probably cost a lot less money just to put some permanent goals out there for the kids to play. Uh, it's about, uh, almost two acres per field and that's plenty of room that we have out there at the, uh, the Sunny View Park. I think that, uh, we have plenty of adults that are willing to help. If not, I would love to coordinate with some of you guys just to see what's, what's, uh, what we can do. You know what I mean? And, um, the development side of it just seems kinda weird to me considering that the director is not even from Sunnyside. And so how could you address those issues if you don't live here? The issue is kids are getting into the wrong things and we're trying to push back by giving them something possible to do. So please take into consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Sandra Sossati.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Sossati, um, resident here of Sunnyside. Um, and so I just wanted to go where I was listening in the work session um, online regarding the positions for the Parks and Recs. I'm just curious to know, um, on how, um, how would I say this? So I know the two positions that are currently right now are the recreation supervisor and the community center assistant, right? Has those hours been tested to where maybe one opens up and one goes in from twelve to seven? I mean, I live right across the street. I really don't see that place pretty busy. Um, I do work from home from some, sometimes, so I never really see the parks or the community center busy. So I know that before hiring somebody else, I think that, um, we do need to evaluate maybe like what, um, what are the activities that are wanting to be brought? Um, what programs are going to be put in place? I would like to see also what the supervisor has to bring to the table, um, with ideas before hiring for that position. I do think that once it's up and running, then that's where you can think about hiring because you need to want to test something, right? And then hire for those positions. So, um, that was just my suggestion on that. Um, also the suggestion on looking at their hours too. Like I said, I live across the street. I never see it busy. The only time I saw it busy was when people were getting COVID tested. Um, and then also for the advisory committees, um, I think it's great that you guys are posting a lot online. Um, and one of the things though, was there any workshops at all to kinda give more information in person for the advisory committees that vacancies were for? I don't know if that, if that was a, um, because I don't know how many people applied to those vacancies. I know there was quite a few open or, you know, quite a few open, so I don't know if maybe there was any workshops to see who would be interested in applying? Because I looked online and I looked at several committees and like for their part one, I'm like, man, I gotta be a pilot to be on this committee or something, you know? Um, so I don't know if that's maybe somewhere in the future when we're, um, doing openings for certain positions in advisory, maybe having a workshop so people could ask questions there, um, to see if they're interested in applying for the position. Because I know online it's, you know, you, you see this information and you're thinking like, can I, can I serve even on that committee? So that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's not really in order to, uh, applaud at a public comment session, folks, so. Although I'm thankful you guys are here. So the last, last name on my list is Jose Sossati.
Hello, everybody, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, speak today. Um, I don't have anything prepared. I've been, uh, a member of this community for, uh, forty-three years. Forty-three years young I am. Born and raised, um, struggled in this community, was, uh, at-risk youth myself, and I currently now work as a gang prevention and intervention specialist. Uh, obviously did a three sixty. Um, so that allows me to, um, obviously see the needs of our community's youth. Um, I've worked with, uh, districts as far as like Granger, Sunnyside, Grandview, and it, it's all the same, all, all the way around. I would like to focus on my community, okay? And, uh, I'm here to, uh, support the rest of, uh, the folks here that have come up and expressed their, their, uh, opinions on, uh, you know, the, the track, uh, deal, whatever it's, uh, whatever came up. Um, and I just hope that there's, um, uh, good thought into what our finances are being spent on. I hope there's needs assessments being done. Uh, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of youth that not only do soccer, but would like to do many other things that aren't an option because of money or because of location or because of transportation or many other, many other reasons. Uh, so I would like to, um, just let you know that I am here to help with whatever I can. Once again, this is my community. Uh, these youths are our future. And if we don't start to focus on them right now, um, we're, we're not going to be in a good place. We really, we, we really aren't because if you go and do half of the things that these kids are doing out there and not only out there, but on social media, it's, we're, we're not gonna end up good. So I just want to let you guys know that I hope everybody thinks really hard about, uh, you know, what we're putting out there and what we're providing for our youths. Uh, because at the end of the day, if we're, uh, giving them options or we're throwing them opportunities that don't fit to them or they're just not going to be interested, once again, we're just going to be wasting, uh, funds and, and time. Uh, and that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do want to thank each and every one of you for your comments this evening. Um, I say this over and over again, but if you don't tell us, we don't know what's on your mind, what's important to you. And we are here to hear you and listen, whether you catch us out on the street in town or at, uh, one of the businesses in town, or you come before us at these meetings. It's extremely important that you inform us of what's going on in your, in your world and, and, and how we can improve your lives. That's what we are very interested in doing. I want to invite all of you who commented on the youth programs to remain for a while because, um, we do have one agenda item that has been added. And after we get done with the consent agenda, I will ask council if they mind if we add that. If there's no objection, it will be added as the first item on the active agenda. It pertains to the youth program and it pertains to the track that, uh, some of you are objecting to. And I would like you to be here to hear the discussion and hear the proposal. And, um, that will maybe help you in your decision and in your thought process on that as well. And please feel free to comment to council members after the meeting if you wish to do so. All right. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following minutes, approve the minutes of the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting, the audit report. Item B payroll vouchers, approved payroll voucher numbers one-one-nine-four-eight-four through one-one-nine-four-nine-zero. And wire transfers as listed for five hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents for the period ending April tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Item C claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-eight-nine-seven-one through one-zero-nine-zero-two-one. And wire transfers as listed for three hundred seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-one cents for the period ending April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-nine-zero-two-two to one-zero-nine-zero-eight-one. And wire transfers as listed for three hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-four cents for the period ending on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, anyone have an item that they wish to pull from the consent agenda for discussion? Mr. Gavon.
Thirty-nine-nine. Thirty-nine, eleven. Thirty-nine-nine, thirty-nine-eleven and forty-one-fifty-five.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Gavon, you have the floor.
Uh, thirty-nine-eleven, just kinda want to explain like what, uh, that program is with the Department of Ecology, with the water quality program. Just this quick explanation.
Mr. Sanchez?
Those are wastewater annual fees for, the permit for just for us having that NPD has permitted from wait, it's an annual.
Annual thing. Okay. And then, uh, the Apple Valley, um, for interpretation services. I keep seeing the two thousand dollar charge for whenever the trial was canceled. I think previously I had requested the contract for Apple Valley. I just never received it.
It turns out that we actually don't have a current contract with them. The most recent contract that we had with Apple Valley was put in place in two thousand and twelve. And they kind of unfortunately have us sort of over a barrel, if you will, because there are not many court-certified translators out there. And so when our, when I spoke with our court and our judge about this issue, um, basically my, from my understanding, they, they informed the Apple Valley that we did not want to, you know, have to pay for these when they're canceled, no one shows up, all these things. And they basically told us, well, we're not going to show up if you want us to show up and continue helping you with your court. We don't have a contract, so kind of pay this, you're gonna pay. So at this point right now, we are paying that, but we are nego, we are going to open negotiations for a contract with that, um, with them, but they're, and we'll probably put that out for an RFP. Um, whether or not we get many responses, as I said, um, certified court interpreters are somewhat few and far between in our area. Um, so there's not that many options, but we are going to do them.
I'm real quick for more information on this particular situation, this particular charge. Whenever we have to have interpreters available for a criminal trial, some sort, you have to have two, um, to certify each, each other's interpretation. That's required by Washington law. This particular case we're talking about here, this, the, the defendant in that case, instead of going to trial that morning, right before trial, decided to plead guilty instead. But we already had the interpreters there ready to do the work. And so as a result, they charged us for the day for that.
Wow.
Gotcha. Can, can we use Zoom in court? Zoom interpreters? I've seen that before.
There's nothing prohibiting that, I believe, in this situation. Uh, but you still have to have the both, two interpreters doing it, so.
They do have to be court-certified interpreters.
Yeah.
So I don't know if Zoom is court-certified or not.
It was during the pandemic, but those laws were changed and lifted. I don't know if it's still allowed or not in this particular situation.
So we'd have to do some investigation there.
Hmm, okay. And then the last one is forty-one-fifty-five. We have, uh, we're paying for two employees on Rotary?
Um, yes, we are paying for our recreation coordinator or, excuse me, our recreation supervisor, her dues, and then we also pay, um, another city hall employee's dues. Uh, because they like Rotary and the previous city manager had approved that.
Okay.
That answer your questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Hart, you had a question?
I think it's been a longstanding, uh, precedent, I guess is the right word, uh, that, uh, cities and banks and various organizations pay for their members to belong to civic organa, volunteer organizations like Rotary Lions, et cetera. Um, it's, it's been standard prop, um, standard procedure to pay their dues. So I think that that's, if that helps at all with, with that.
Do we have a cap? Like, is it?
I, I am not aware of a policy that, that lists a cap or prohibits particular, um, organizations. I believe there, there are some other employee organi, employees that get paid for, maybe Lions Club? I can't think of anything else off the top of my head necessarily, but the previous administration, um, had indicated that it was important to her that we have staff members that are involved in the community and attending various different organizations. And so it was a push for her to have people who wanted to, um, participate, be able to do so. And so, um, this is, I can't think of any other examples off the top of my head, though.
And we have typically had our city manager on Rotary as well. So, um, the last, I mean, I've served with three city managers and they've all been participants in Rotary, so.
So we were paying hers too for a while then?
That's correct. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. What is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Approve the consent agenda.
We'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Council Bill or second by Council Ripley to approve the consent agenda as presented. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I two vote aye. Motion passes. All right, active agenda. All right, council, I was presented at the beginning of the meeting with an agenda item from Mr. Martin that he would like to add. And as a result of the conversation in the public comments this evening, I would like to put that right away at the beginning because it does concern youth development and it concerns the, uh, pump track that has been proposed. If there's no objection, I'd like to add it right away at the beginning.
I agree.
Hearing no objection, all right. Mr. Martin, your item, I'm thinking you may have it titled incorrectly.
Title, yeah.
All right, so why don't you go ahead and present that, sir?
So this is actually a resolution to, um, apply for a YAF grant, which is a youth, uh, um, athletic facilities grant with the, with RCO, the Recreation and Conservation Office, Washington State. Um, so the city has been approached by Daybrick Rotary and Dirt Boy, Dirt Boy Designs to con, to construct a pump track here in Sunnyside. Um, they, they kinda sat down with the planning department and we went over like, okay, this is kind of a, an interesting project. Where would we do this? What does it look like? And, um, they, they gave us a presentation. And um, they, they gave us a presentation. Um, we then, the staff then took the presentation to the Board of Parks, um, Parks and Recreation. And gave them a small presentation. Um, I, there, I think. Uh, the, the, at the end of it, the, the board ultimately decided to pass a motion to for then forward this. Project onto the, the city council for a brief presentation. So uh, Daybreak Rotary and Dirt Boy Designs have approached the city um, to apply for a YAF grant. Um, for this facility and looking at it, going over, going over this project, looking at it, giving the, the presentation to. Uh, the board, the um, Parks and Recs. Um, there is a spot out at Sunnyview Park. There's two unused baseball fields out there right now that have been, they've been long unused for quite some time. Um, that we thought this would be a perfect, perfect fit for. Um, given the parameters of the grant, Sunnyside will qualify for a ninety-ten, so we, we would qualify for ninety percent grant and ten percent match. That match would be allowed to be um, in kind donation, um, dollar spent, volunteer. So there's a lot, it's very flexible with RCO and how we come up with that ten percent match. Um, Dirt Boy Designs has been in this for quite a while. They've been doing some work in the tri-cities. Um, they've done some work up in the. Um, in Kittittas County and working with some groups up there. They um, they, they do part of this as, as, as a living, so. Um, they, they come up with the designs. And uh, the thing is, is that the city has to apply for the grant. So that's why they came to us is we would apply for the grant and we would cite their help. And, and part of this application. So um, there would be nothing coming from my budget in this. There'd be nothing that's budgeted out of the city's dollars for this. We have a strategy on how to, um, that's, that's the thing is the, the group came to me with a strategy on how to come up with. The ten percent fun, ten percent match that we need. Uh, we do have a, a strategy to, to do that, so. Um, and the other thing with, with pump tracks is that they can be scaled um, to the amount of reward that we see, receive or don't receive. So they're, they're scalable to the area. Um, pump tracks are designed in a way that is um, inclusive to. Um, various groups of people, whether it's bikes, rollerblades, skateboards, scooters, they also design them to accommodate for wheelchairs, which is something that. Um, might not necessarily be something we're always looking for it to, for as well. So it's, it's an overall, it's a. Inclusive free activity, the only upfront cost is the, the design and the ongoing maintenance of the park. Um. So that's, that's what we were approached with. I thought this is a, a really good idea. The, the, the plans are ninety-nine percent done. All that we would have to do is the city staff is apply for the grant. So that's, that's what I'm coming with um, for you tonight is to. Um, a, a resolution request to apply for the grant and um, work, continue working with Daybreak Rotary and Dirt Boy Designs. To, to um, apply for a pump track out at Sunnyview Park. I'm free for any questions.
So just, just to clarify, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump ahead of the rest of council on the questions right now, but this does not take out of play any soccer fields. It's only dealing with unused baseball diamonds that have not been used for some time.
Correct.
And is it gonna use both of them or is it just gonna use one?
Um, again, that, that would be, that would be depending on the amount of funding that we receive i- is scalable. So if we, if we just receive less, then we. Anticipated, then it'd probably be one. If we receive what we ask for, then it'd probably be both of them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and as far as paying for it, it's not gonna cost the city anything out of the city budget at all?
Just my staff time to write the grant, yep.
Okay, okay, council, Mister Beeler.
I have no idea what a pump track is.
Right.
So, okay.
Right.
Um, so a pump track, they, they, they're a little bit different than BMX tracks. BMX tracks, you have the, the dirt dumps that you, you. Try to get air off of and everything, but these are, these are more or less tracks that you use your momentum to either race around the track or, or um. Uh, yeah, and, and more often than not, they are, they're paved, they're blacktop, so you can use your, your body's momentum to. Go from one transition to another to just kind of zoom and race around the track. Um, the cool thing about pump tracks that there are, there are regional competitions, there are, there's a lot of, lot of different events. That are associated with this. Uh, Red Bull has a whole pump track event and to be on their circuit, you have to have a ten thousand square foot or larger. Pump track and then they'll consider you for, for regional events, things like that. So um, that's, that's simply what it would be. Is just another place we've, with the recent su- success of the skate park. I mean, there's, there's kids there. Every day. Um, so uh, you know, this was something that this group was willing to, to kind of put forward and, and approach the city. With and um, it's, you know, it's, it seems, seems like a good idea.
Are there any stipulations with this? Like the uh, skate park that's out there at the park now that we can't do anything with?
Well, it's like, if we ever accept any sort of RCO funding, um, the, anything we use RCO money on, it just, the, the. Item has to stay a park in perpetuity unless we wanna pay back the money that we use from them.
Yeah, so Ms. Hart.
Um, my question was have, with uh, the idea of bringing forth this uh, a pump park. Um, have, have the Daybreak, it's Daybreak Rotary that is.
Yeah.
Bringing this forward. Have, have they done some kind of re- research or, or found out there's some people in the community maybe we don't know about? Who are really into this kind of?
Yeah, so I have, I currently have four letters of support that, from various community members that um, are very interested in this, this type of thing. So yeah, there has, there has been some community outreach. Um, yeah.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Is, is this the same grant opportunity that uh, Counsel Ripley brought before council, uh, was discussed at YVCO at one point about a month ago?
Um, there were two, I can't remember if that was the one specifically. There was another, there was another one that closed fairly. Like two months ago, and I don't know if it was that one or if it was this one. I have to go back and double check.
Okay, and then we have another question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, say there's uh, organizations, uh, you know, nonprofit that wanna help the soccer community. Or can they approach the city of Sunnyside and do something similar?
Yeah, absolutely. This is, I'm, um, I am, I, I don't wanna be exclusive on anything. So this, that's why I, if, if somebody comes to me. With a proposal for a, a, a indoor soccer field, if they come to me with a proposal, I will search high and low for grants. Um, for them, for any sort of athletic facility funding for them. Um, they, this, these, these two groups just happen to approach me. With, with ninety-nine percent of the work done. Um, so that's, that's kind of why I was jumping at it. Um. But if somebody were to approach me and they said, hey, I have a plans for a fifteen thousand square foot facility, uh, and um. How, how can I make this happen? Yeah, let's, let's, let's research it. Let's absolutely go for it and get it, get it done, see what we can do. I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Ripley?
I'd like to find out the percentage of uh, I mean, soccer players compared to the. This type, you know, the BMX, like that field. It sounds like soccer fields are very popular and there's not enough.
Um, there are, and we would, like I said, we wouldn't be taking away, this project wouldn't take away any, it would just use two unused or, or um. Baseball fields that are.
That could be used as soccer fields if uh, we could turn them into.
They could, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um. A couple of questions again. Um, can we talk about the strategy? How are we gonna come up with this, with this ten percent? You said you have it covered?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so um, right now there's a strategy for um, and to, without going too far into the, the weeds of it, there's a strategy. Cuz we're gonna have to bring in gravel, so there's a strategy to bring in gravel right now. Um, Daybreak Rotary has an event coming up that they'll be raising funds as part of that. That will be able to fill in any, any sort of gaps. The design work can be done by Dirt, Dirt Boy Designs, which um, the design work is, is. It's part, it's a specialty field, you're designing an athletic facility, so that can also be used as part of um, the in-kind donation as well. And then as far as any staff time that involves any sort of writing of grants, um, applying for anything, that can be used. Um, so there, there's a handful of things that we can, we can itemize that, that can, that can make up for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cause I recall also during the Parks and Recs meeting, which I'm the liaison for. Um, there, there was some people that brought up very similar concerns to the many that, you know, spoke during public comment. And I think I also posed the question, you know, how are we assessing the need of bringing in a pump track versus going up? And, and, and repairing some of our uh, existing fields and um, I've also been in a lot of. If it's social media or different conversations about doing, you know, creating a, an indoor sports complex. Which is also very much needed in our community and we heard our community speaking about it here today, or so, many of our community members. I think the sentiment here, and I'm not trying to speak for, for, for the goal, but I'm trying to recap, is that. There's been an imminent need for sports, specifically soccer. It's very much part of the culture of the community. So when we prioritize something that's very, I don't wanna call it irrelevant, but it's just different. Maybe it's just a sport that many of our community members aren't, uh, you say you have some letters of support, but maybe there's not very many of our, our members. That even know what a pump track is. So if, just assessing the sentiment of the community. When we are looking like we're prioritizing something else, it's not good optics, right?
So here's my, why, why can't we have both? That's my question that I'm gonna propose to you and to the rest of council. Why can't we have both? Um, there is space. I mean, in my opinion, there are, there are city facilities that do have space and do have room for something. Uh, like more soccer fields or like an indoor facility, if we, if we be creative about it. Um. Uh, yeah, uh, if, if, if we don't want to pursue something like this, we don't have to, we can, we can, I mean, you asked staff to go out and look for grants. Uh, this is part of that process. So I went out, looked for a grant for this. So if you, uh, that would be a, a, if council doesn't wanna pursue. That grant for a facility, for this facility in particular, uh, we can look past it and, and come back to the, to the drawing board next time. Uh, which would be about two years from now. So that's just um, something, something.
So my question, Mister Martin, let's say that we move ahead with this and that we approve the application of the grant. We're not even approving the project at this point. We're just talking about approving the application for the grant. But say we do that, do we have resources and facilities to improve the dam- or to repair the damage to soccer fields? I mean, somebody was saying that there's holes in the field, that there, there's other needs that the fields need to be improved. Do we have some resources to be able to do that?
Well, depending what field we're talking about, but yes, if there's something in the fields right now that potholes or something in there that needs to be filled, we'll take care of that. I don't know what fields, but yes, we, we can address it.
So if we were to invite the coaches or, or somebody to come up to the city and say, okay, this, these are the fields that have problems and this is what needs to be fixed. Um, because once again, we don't know until somebody tells us, cuz I don't see city staff out there playing soccer. I see them riding mowers. But you're gonna miss potholes, you're gonna miss damage sometimes if you're riding on mower, especially with the bigger ones. So we can do some repairs. Once we know what needs to be repaired.
Correct. If, if it's brought to me, I will make sure that those things get done. I just, I need to know which ones we're referring to and we can address it.
Okay, and all they need to do is come to city hall or email you?
Help me, come city hall, call me, yep.
Okay, so and your email is on the webpage, right? Okay. And if they can't get ahold of Mister Sanchez, please get ahold of me. And I will relay the email to Mister Sanchez. But once we know what needs to be fixed, we can go ahead and do that. And again, this is not any money coming out of the city's coffers. So that's kind of a nice thing as well. What we've been looking for is. A range of things that our youth can get involved in, and that's why this came before us. Uh, we know that soccer is an incredibly, incredibly popular sport in Sunnyside. And has been growing, uh, which is why we put the effort into the Tina North Park last year and it needs continued development. Uh, we haven't, we haven't arrived where we need to be yet with this one, but we are continuing to try to develop the soccer fields that we have under our control. And sometimes it seems painfully slow and I apologize for that. It's not intended to be slow, but it certainly seems that way sometimes. But. Other opportunities as well. Our kids aren't going to be playing soccer all the time. So the skate park in Central Park is always active. There's always something going on there. Um, and I think that was a great addition to recreational opportunities here in Sunnyside. Um, another activity like this pump park could be also. An extra addition to what we have as an opportunity to do here in Sunnyside. Um, you know, my own kids were on the swim team and were at the pool constantly. And yet they were excited about other opportunities as well. And so at that time, there wasn't much going on. So we're trying to. Expand options. So that's one of the reasons that we started looking at this.
Mm-hmm, Mister Mayor. I just wanna make another comment. Uh, Mister Martin, I know you mentioned that it, that you take direction from council to go out and look for grants. I think it's really important for all of us to understand is that we have to understand our community needs, right? What has the community been asking for? And I know you just uh, commented, Mister Mayor, about kids aren't playing soccer all the time. I mean, I, even before I decided to run for council. I was a part, you know, Facebook in itself is, is, you know, it's its own territory. But I mean, I was just running into so many conversations about the need for soccer park improvements, et cetera, et cetera. So. Um. When we are looking for funds, when we are looking for development, I think it's really important to engage the community. Um, I'm all about diversification. Of different opportunities to come, uh, to bring in to, uh, especially for our youth. Um, but I think it's part of the equation is to get the community involved in this discussion. Um, because then it's not looking like we're not taking their asks into consideration. Which have been there. Um, I've heard them, I feel like if any of us haven't heard them, we've been living under a rock, quite honestly. Um, and kids are not just playing soccer, but I can assure you that soccer is the heart. It's the core and it's the spirit of our culture and many, and many might not be playing it, but majority are.
And, and again, if um, if somebody has planned, and I can reiterate this, I'm, I'm not going against any sort of soccer facility. If somebody has ideas and plans for a soccer facility, bring it to me and I will happily go forward and look for money for that. Um, again, that's, that's, I would really wanna drive home that point is that I, I'm, when it comes to funding and getting a city, what's, what's the city deserves. I'm very selfish and I will go for anything that I can get my hands on. So um, that's, that's something I would definitely want to reiterate to the council. Is that if, again, if somebody comes to me with plans or an idea, I'd, I'd be if I shot you an idea for um, something we can talk about in the future for. Potentially expanding an indoor facility. Um, so yeah, absolutely. I'm all for that idea. I think it's very important, yes.
Just one, Ms. Hart?
Um, one of the things I'm thinking about is when we, this is a Rotary club, uh, Daybreak Rotary. And they're the ones who are responsible for putting together with, with city approval to put that skate park in Central Park. They went out, they found a designer, nationally renowned designer, and there's that particular uh. Uh, skateboard park is used by the, a diverse number of young people and young adults. Who will use that. I think at some point, there've been people been talking about having contests out there, which I think is a wonderful idea. Just like with the pool, we have the swim championships. I think with the BMX, uh, or not BMX, but the pump track. Is another way to bring more revenue into the, into the city, because if you build it to the, so we could be a regional. Uh, participant, you know, have the criteria. I think that'd be wonderful. I do ask the question though, how many soccer fields do we have? In Sunnyside, not including the schools, because I know my grandson-in-law. And his mother have about three hundred and twenty-five soccer kids over behind Pioneer uh, school. About four or five days a week. They're, they're always out there playing. And then they play at Chief Kamaiak in, indoors during, during the winter time. So, but how many actual outdoor soccer fields do we have?
Well.
Or potential for?
Yeah, the only parks that could really host a, a good sized soccer field would be probably three, maybe four. The rest of them are, they're more community parks. Um, they're small, they wouldn't be able to be big enough, but um. So yeah, I would say three, maybe four fields.
So, um, can I just?
That'd be, could you be used for?
Yeah, could be used for. So Sunnyview Park is, is, I know that there's been soccer play.
Yeah, that's probably the most used out of all.
And do we have?
Uh, we have Tina Not over here, that's been, they started using that one as well.
Uh-huh.
Um, we have South Hill, I get, you could play, I mean, it's, it's not as big as Sunnyview for, for that because of the baseball fields. But there's some sections there that you can, you can practice and, and, and play. Um, the other one that could potentially be, we. Be, uh, would be Kwanis, that has a, a bigger area behind on the east side of the park. Um, uh, the rest are too small or not big enough for, uh, with everything else that they have in there, like the playground and, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mister Galvane would be the next one.
So, um, Mister Martin, when was, when did the Daybreak Rotary and, and Dirt Boy Designs approach you?
But two months ago or so, given as like, I think near the end of, near, in February. It was in February. Don't know exactly what day in February, yeah.
Okay. And then uh, like I said earlier, you know, if anybody out there that has a plan, right? We would be seeing something similar and about the same time. So yeah, I encourage anybody out there that, you know, can do something like this, like Rotary. You know, go for it. You know, it's, 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 it's something that the city needs. I've obviously said, you know, the more youth activities we, we have, the better. This isn't gonna cost us anything, you know.
So another thing too is that I, I did work on the Sozo co- complex for quite some time. That was one of my pet projects when I was, um, with the city. Of Yakima, uh, so I do have a little bit of knowledge about soccer parks. And if anybody, again, if anybody wants to bring it to me, I would happily. Work with them.
I think that would also get the full support of council. Or project like that. Um, somebody else had a question down. Mr. Beeler.
I just wanna ask, how many soccer fields do we have that actually have the goalpost? Or playing soccer?
That would be, well, they, they. They have, they're not, most of them aren't just there, they, they're, they're mobile. So they would have, if you, if you rent, if you wanna rent it for soccer, they're. Post that they would be brought out for it and then they're put back. So Tina Not and, uh, Sunnyview is typically the ones that get used for that.
Okay, Ms. Frausto.
Is there, are there fees attached to, uh, renting out some of these, uh, equips, these equipments? There, there are. Do you know what they are?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay.
But the schools, um, excuse me. Excuse me, jumping in there, I'm sorry. Um, but the schools also charge rent, do they not? For, I don't know, or do we know? I, I'm, from, from just my, my grandson-in-law, um. It, it seems to me that they do pay fees for Pioneer and Chief Kamaiken.
So the, the, we're right. And so the school has a soccer field that, again, maybe so, but it's, it's, it's the schools and like you said, it's fenced in. The, the, the thing with a park is it's public. Anybody can come and, and have a picnic in the middle there if they want to. So if you want to guarantee and have the soccer field available for you, that's the only way that you would be having it available. Because something else could be going on. You could have a family having something else there and it's, they're gonna be there. Because at the same time that maybe somebody wants to play soccer, cause it's a public park.
You have to reserve the pla- the field.
If you wanna reserve the park for that, then that's where you make those reservations and you get the soccer goals and everything so that. You're guaranteed to have it for your event.
Ms. Horner, you had a comment?
I'm just, um, I, the fee for per field per day right now for, uh, to get a field space in the city park. Is thirty-one dollars per field per day. Um, and then for, for like a tournament reservation up to three days, it's seventy-eight dollars per field. Um, those are typically at South Hill Park.
That's good.
Okay, Mr. Nancy the Mayor.
Are, are we planning on charging for the pump track? So the, why do we charge for the soccer fields, for those soccer goals?
Well, that, a- again, that's so that you're guaranteed to have it. You're not, if you wanna reserve it, that's, that's how they, it's been done.
Can we leave the soccer goals out, out there?
Well, that's, they would get, they would go missing. So that's why they, they put them away, because they'd be taken.
I've, I've seen it before where they lock them on the bottom. It's just an idea, I mean.
I also imagine that this pump track, should it be constructed, um, if they're gonna have a tournament or something like that, would, they would have to pay to reserve that as well. Um, there's no way that we're gonna block off the public without a reservation.
Any portion of the park, if, just like any city facility, just like, um, Central Park, when we do. Different events, if somebody wants to rent it for something, for exclusive use of their organization, they do have to pay the fee for that.
All right, council. So the question before us is to, um. Uh, what do we want to apply for the grant? Um, again, we're not approving the, the construction of the park at this point. It's the application for the grant. Because the organization who wants to build it does not apply for the grant themselves. That is up to us to do that. Do we? Does, does somebody wanna make a motion that we apply for the grant?
I would like to make the motion to apply for a grant for, uh, the pump park. Um, as a, I think that it's one more, one more diversity activity in our, in our community and. And I would like to, like to see that. Good, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilor Hart and second by Deputy Mayor Galván to apply for the grant from RCO. Debate on this item.
Can I?
You may.
Um, just speaking to that, to the motion, it seems to me that, again, with diversity. Being the thing that we wanna bring to our community, it's also one more thing that, that attracts. Uh, people to come to our, uh, to our community, move to our community, whether, you know, it's people who live now someplace else. Will say, hey, my kids are really interested in riding bikes and here's a really cool thing. I, I really think that, again, and with, in, in. Conjunction with the soccer fields, we, you know, I, I absolutely am in favor of soccer. My. Great granddaughter is an absolute fiend and, uh, soccer fiend and, but. But I really think that diversity of having the pump track, there's a way to, as you said, put a fee on people wanting to use it more than one day. Um, we could do that, you know, assuming there's an association who wants to do that. The fact that the Rotary Club. Has, has come forward with this idea, it, again, I think that, that. Them coming forward with doing a lot of the man work, a lot of the help with the. Uh, design and so forth, I think that, I think it's a good addition to our community. That's my comment.
Further, further debate or commentary? All right, again, this is a motion to simply apply for the grant. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. Once again, once the grant is received, or we have confirmation on that, then we have to approve that the work goes forward. And also I would encourage anybody who's involved in the soccer program, if there is any repair that needs to be done to a soccer field, if you would get that information to Mr. Sanchez or to myself. Or city manager, um, we would be happy to go to work and. Try to improve those. I don't want kids out there twisting an ankle or breaking a knee or whatever happens when you're running out there for soccer, cause I know you can have some pretty serious injuries if, uh. Things aren't quite right. So we want to improve those fields as well. All right. Next item of business. Thirty-sixth Annual Cinco de Mayo Festival Proclamation. Consider approving a resolution proclaiming May three through five, two thousand twenty-four. As the thirty-sixth annual Cinco de Mayo Festival in Sunnyside, Washington. Council members, discussion. On this item, questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion, is that?
Well, I'm not seeing anybody rushing to make comments or questions, so Ms. Hart, go ahead and make your motion.
Want to, uh. To approve the resolution proclaiming May three through five, two thousand twenty-four as. As the thirty-sixth annual Cinco de Mayo Festival in Sunnyside, Washington and approve the proclamation. Being read into the record.
I second.
All right, we have a motion as read by Councilor Hart, by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Frausto. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. With that, I will read into the record the following proclamation. Whereas the Cinco de Mayo holiday commemorated the victory of the Mexican people over the French army at the Battle of Puebla, May five, eighteen sixty-two. And whereas the city of Sunnyside is home to a significant Latino population, and we wish to honor the community groups and individuals of this community. And whereas we recognize the strong cultural and familial ties in Sunnyside as we commemorate the thirty-sixth annual Cinco de Mayo Festival in downtown Sunnyside. By exploring foods, traditions and entertainment. And now therefore, I, Dean Burisma, Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington. By virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May three through five, two thousand twenty-four. As the thirty-sixth annual Cinco de Mayo Festival in the city of Sunnyside, honor and celebrate. The Mexican heritage, culture and history. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand. And cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty-second day of April in the year two thousand twenty-four. Have two and I'm assuming I better sign both.
Yes, please.
Monica Niemeyer is here from Rotary to accept the proclamation, one of the copies, and may I take a picture?
Absolutely.
Would everybody like to go up front to take?
Everybody wanna get in the picture, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we'd like, we like.
Just highlight how short I, if you sit by me.
Oh, see if I can get my bones through this, yeah.
I'm gonna stand by you, make you look really.
Exactly, I think he's taking that job.
No, 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 we meet at the hospital now in the classroom. Yes, we order our meals ahead of time. And we do a lot of volunteering, but. I know where to go to watch.
There you are. Okay. Our interim city manager has stepped out for a second, but I think we can carry on.
Okay.
And, uh, audience members too, um, you are under no obligation to stay for the entire meeting. If the portion that you're interested in has, um, ended. You are, you may leave, you're certainly welcome to stay. I encourage you to stay. Um, I think knowing what's going on in your city is extremely helpful. But at the same time, I know that many of you may not have planned to be here for the entire evening, so. As long as you exit quietly, it's fine with all of us. And again, I wanna thank you all for being here and for your comments. All right. Item B. Citywide pedestrian improvements, HLA Task Order two zero two four dash zero six. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute Task Order two zero two. Four dash zero six with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying. For the TIB Complete Streets Awards Citywide Pedestrian Improvements Project. And I'm gonna assume this is gonna go to Mr. Sanchez.
You are correct.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Stephanie Ray with HLA, who's gonna be going over this project.
Ms. Ray.
Mayor, Members of Council, Public Works Director, thank you for having me here tonight. At the last city council meeting, uh. City council accepted an award from TIB for complete streets for ADA retrofit improvements. Along Lincoln and Sixteenth, um, directly benefiting the schools for ADA compliance. And, uh, the motion was revised at the last meeting, uh, in consideration if TIB would consider alternate locations. We did get response back from TIB and that the answer was no, um, they would. Need us to pursue with those, uh, locations within the application. And then also, uh, when we had applied, um, we'd applied for nearly a one million dollar project. And that funding amount got cut down to about five hundred thousand, which was the max amount that TIB awarded for the cycle. And so we were back, uh, tonight, um, to talk about. Um, our task order, which would be for design and construction administration of those improvements. The, and thank you for pulling that up. The locations are identified on the screen. This current round of TIB funding, uh, requires the improvements to both be designed and constructed this year. Uh, and not just under contract, meaning the contractor has to finish. If a contract is midway, um, by the end of the year, the money will be pulled. So we're here asking, uh, approval and resolution by city council to approve our contract so that we can get going.
Council members, questions or comments for Ms. Ray or Mr. Sanchez? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Council Beeler, second by Councilor Hart, to approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute Task Order two zero two four. Dash zero six with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated for the TIB Complete Streets Awards Citywide Pedestrian Improvements Project. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. Item C. Ecology Stormwater Agreement. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute the Ecology Stormwater Agreement. WQC two zero two four dash S U N N Y S dash zero zero two, zero two. And, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. And I will turn it over again to Stephanie Ray with HLA Engineering, uh, who's gonna go over this project as well.
That's right.
Mayor, Members of Council, Public Works Director, thank you again. In around October last year, we submitted a grant application to the Department of Ecology for a stormwater planning document to target. Nearly ninety outfalls within the city of Sunnyside, considered part of the city's MS four system. So those are those conveyances that collect city storm water that discharge into water bodies of the state. In our area, those are generally the SVID canals, whether they're open or closed. And what this planning study is intended to do is then. Identify each outfall, supplement information that we currently don't have. And prepare implementation plans for either alleviating the outfall altogether or adding water quality treatment. And so, uh, Department of Ecology has, uh, accepted the application that was submitted. The agreement has been coordinated and has actually been delivered to the interim city manager for signature. And so this step is the final step in authorizing that agreement. So there is, um, when we submitted the application and we spoke to council last year about this, there was a twenty-five percent match requirement. The city, uh, was eligible for a hardship reduction, so that match requirement went down to fifteen percent. And now we're currently at five percent cash match. So the total city contribution to the project would be thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And as soon as the agreement is signed, uh, we're able to move forward.
Questions or comments for Ms. Ray or Mr. Sanchez? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute the Ecology Stormwater Agreement. Uh, WQC twenty twenty-four, Sunnys, zero zero two two.
Ms. Ripley, was that you? Okay. All right, we've got a motion by Councilor Hart, as she read into the record, second by Councilor Ripley. Debate on this item.
It's mandated, we have to do it.
Yeah, there's part, that's part of it. All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I also vote aye, motion passes. Item D, Ecology Stormwater Agreement, HLA Task Order two zero four dash zero five. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute Task Order two zero two four. Dash zero five with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated to complete the tasks identified in the Ecology Stormwater Agreement. WQC two zero two four dash S U N N Y dash zero zero two, zero two. Mr. Sanchez again?
Assisted by Stephanie Ray.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Again, I will, as you know, I have one more left. So this item is for our task order associated with the ecology agreement that was just approved. Uh, the cost of the task order was, is included in the agreement. Uh, the cost of the task order is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, of which thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars would be the city's cash contribution. And so with the task order, we would be executing all those deliverable items that are identified in the ecology agreement. Including handling all the ecology coordination. And with the ultimate goal of preparing a stormwater plan. With identified implementation projects, um, and the hope is to proceed with this very quickly. In time for the next funding cycle, which will be October of this year.
All right, council members, questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Council Ripley, second by Deputy Mayor Galván, to approve the resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute Task Order two zero two four. Dash zero five with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated to complete the tasks identified in the Ecology Stormwater Agreement. WQC dash two zero two four dash S U N N Y dash zero zero two, zero two. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I also vote aye, motion carries. Item E, Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG application. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program to the Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. Mr. Sanchez again?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Stephanie Ray with HLA Engineering.
Ms. Ray.
Over the project.
Thank you, everybody, again. Uh, last item for me for the night. And that is a discussion about a Surface Transportation Block Grant, which is a transportation-only funding program. Offered by Washington State Department of Transportation. Uh, the application would actually be submitted to Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, which, uh, submitted applications. Compete with. which, uh, submitted applications compete with all other cities in the county, also submitting an application. And, uh, then applications are scored and then vetted. So this, uh, funding program currently has zero match requirements, uh, as long as obligation occurs by twenty twenty-six. After twenty twenty-six is Y V C O G's intent to do a new call for projects. So consequently, there is no match requirement associated with this program. The application is for a roundabout. Um, so we had reviewed the city safety plan that was prepared back in twenty twenty-one, uh, which identified, um, areas of improvement based on crash data. Consequently, this location has been on the last several, three, I believe, of the city's six-year transportation improvement program planning documents. And so it led, um, quite a, a priority for the specific area, also knowing that it is one of the first intersections that, um, both freight and motorists, uh, run into as they are entering the downtown area for Yakima Valley Highway. It's also part of the truck route and the F G T S route, so heavily trafficked location. The existing geometry lends itself to quite a few safety concerns. Um, one is that the grade along Yakima Valley Highway is, it, it, it's on a super elevated curve as it was a former state highway. So the project would remove that super elevation. So a large amount of excavation would be needed for place some other roundabout. Then also, uh, we'd be adding continuity between the existing roadways for intermodal, uh, transportation. So both bicycles and, and pedestrians. Uh, this, this roundabout would also serve as a portion of the Yakima Valley Highway, allowing, uh, bicycles to pass freely. Uh, the intended design for that is a, a ten-foot, ten-foot joint use pathway. So the exhibit that you have is a concept level that was used to develop a cost estimate, which is needed for the funding application. This is not intended to be a final design. Um, we have quite a lot of work to do, but if awarded funding, then we would move forward with that. There is a right-of-way phase that would be required. So it's intended to have some, what we call right-of-way clips on the north end, uh, north side properties, both east and west. Then we would enter into a P E phase, which is a engineering phase and then construction phase. So we were, we would intend for, if awarded funding, this improvement to be constructed in the twenty twenty-six year to ensure there's a zero match requirement. Uh, as part of the application, we have to have a resolution to submit. Applications are due this Friday, the twenty-sixth.
All right, questions or comments, council members? Mr. Galván.
So in order to be at the zero contribution, it just needs to be completed before twenty twenty-six is over?
Uh, your, your question is good. Uh, the term is obligated.
Obligated.
So with federal funding, there's a term called obligation. And what that means is that we submit all the paperwork necessary, um, he gets on the leads, but there's a project prospectus and a local agency agreement, which basically it comes from the city and it goes through to the state and then from our local state, it goes to headquarters. And that is essentially, um, the city's, uh, way of telling the state that we're moving forward with this project. So as soon as the money is obligated, then, then we can begin.
And in your experience, um, you think we could set new track for twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, so, um, the timeline for the applications, uh, will be submitting if approved here by Friday. Uh, Y V C O G intends to move forward with these rather quickly, within the next month or so. There would be, uh, a prioritized list of, of, uh, projects. Uh, and, and also know that we have, and it doesn't come to us, it comes to Y V C O G, but there's around, uh, four million, uh, a year that comes locally into our region for transportation. So that's the money that we're competing with. So assuming, you know, the other fifteen, sixteen cities in the area are submitting applications, there'll be a prioritized list. And then those projects will proceed based on that level of money coming in. So at, at the moment, our schedule is to have, um, be awarded funding, you know, assuming we're going to be number one, but be awarded funding and actually be able to start with obligation by the end of twenty twenty-four, beginning of twenty twenty-five. And that will begin, uh, what we call a P E phase and a right-of-way phase. Then construction would be intended to be obligated in twenty twenty-six. It is possible that construction, depending on the time of year, may carry into twenty twenty-seven, but the important thing is to obligate in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I would just like to say thank you for all the hard work you've done on these three projects and everything you've done beforehand. There's a lot of work in this. How many files do we have here?
You'd be impressed. Thank you for that.
I, I think the one, one very important thing to remember too is this is a safety feature. And what you use the term calming traffic as a calming effect. And, um, I, I really think that this is going to be a wonderful addition, especially on moving trucks off of Y V H onto the truck route. So I'm, I'm very pleased with this particular project. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
I'm just impressed with how much history is involved in this intersection. We can see two different roadways, um, between the Bob Hall Finance, well, it used to be Bob Hall Financial Building and Bob's Drive-In is a section of highway that when, uh, are the current Yakima Valley Highway was built, the road curved right there to go up Schoon and then curved on the Van Bell Road to go into Granger and then up north to Pumpkin Center to Zilla. And that was the, uh, the highway through the valley. And then later on, um, but prior to that, actually, prior to that, the highway was going up First Street, out Schoon Road. And, um, then there's another section of highway over there by, um, La Norteña that is part of the old Yellowstone Trail. So there's several le- levels and layers of highways that have passed through that area over the years. And I have seen some tremendous accidents at, uh, that intersection over the years. And I'm, I'm thinking this is a good idea. So thank you for your work on that. I know this has been our, our improvement plan or six-year plan for some time, um, talking about it and trying to decide what to do. And I know not everybody loves roundabouts, but I think this is a solution to make that intersection safer. So further comments or questions?
It took me a while to understand roundabouts, but you've got it down now.
There's just kind of an organic rhythm to it. You just can't get in a rush.
Just got to look at where the traffic is.
I think, what is the council on this item?
I'd like to make the motion to approve a resolution to authorize submission of a grant application to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program to the, uh, Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, Y V C O G.
I second it.
All right, we got a motion that read into the record by councillor Hart, second by councillor Ripley. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. All right, thank you, Ms. Ray, for all the hard work that you did and Mr. Sanchez. You had a huge portion of our agenda this evening. Although it won't seem like that once we get through the other end of this agenda. Community Concert Series, item app, consider authorizing the interim city manager to start a community concert series with a budget amendment of ten thousand dollars, Mr. City Manager.
So like, uh, stated in the study session, this is a project that Mr. Martin and I've worked on. Um, we're asking, this funds are essentially to pay for the bands that we'd like to bring in on Wednesday afternoons from, uh, eleven thirty to one thirty down at Centennial Square. So people would have an opportunity to eat their lunch down there and, uh, maybe watch a concert of various music throughout the summer months here in Sunnyside.
Questions or comments for the manager? Mr. Galván.
How do we come up with Wednesdays?
Maybe Yakima used to be Fridays, so I just picked a day of the week at no particular day.
Different.
I would use a dart or anything, but I might as well have.
So, so it's not Taco Tuesday and not Thirsty Thursday. Concert Wednesday.
Sure.
I like that.
And I suppose if council wanted to, we could pick another day of the week.
I like that Wednesday. That break in the week.
But Wednesday is a kind of a nice, yeah, you're right, a nice break in the week. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Let's approve.
A second.
All right, we got a motion by councillor, deputy mayor Galván, and second by councillor Frausto to authorize the interim city manager to start a community concert series with a budget amendment of ten thousand dollars. Debate on this item.
You said, uh, I just had a quick question on, you said that if you've already got some response from some bands who are interested in taking part in this, um, can you kind of give us an idea what kind of genre of music we're going to be hearing?
It's all over the board. It's, uh, so I, I just got a list and I had a, a bunch of people from, um, different, uh, yeah, it's all over the board from folk to pop. So it's, it's and anything in between, yeah. So and, and English and Spanish as well. So it's all in between, yeah. So we're, we're kind of very, keep it, keep a variety going.
And, and, and just a thought, our high school has a really cool mariachi band.
Yeah.
Yeah. I really like those guys. I got joy listening to those guys.
That might be for one of the early ones before school gets out.
Mm-hmm.
Good, good plan.
Real quick, if I could, um, the speakers that we have downtown, do they still work?
The, the ones that we used to pipe the music through downtown?
Yeah. So from my understanding is that the speakers work, but the equipment that carries the sig- that pushes the signal, that is gone. So that was provided by a company, they took it back because it was in the, the, the finance building that's right there in the corner. Um, they, they came and they grabbed it. So the speakers, the infrastructure's there, we just need like some sort of thing to carry.
However, it sounds like most of these bands bring their own equipment.
Yeah.
That's a valid.
Yeah. And we also, the city also has a small P A system that we can use for like solo acts that would work just fine.
Okay, so we have a motion. Any more debate comment? No? All right. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. Item G, unfreeze positions, recreation coordinator and technology support assistant. Consider approving a resolution to end the temporary fees on the hiring of the positions of recreation coordinator and technology support assistant, Mr. City Manager.
Commissioner Navarro.
Good evening, city council. Uh, as we briefly discussed during our study session earlier, what I have before you tonight is a resolution to unfreeze the positions that were frozen on, at the February twelfth, uh, meeting. During that meeting, uh, council advised that they wanted more information in regards to both positions. So that is what we have before you tonight. Uh, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer any at this time.
Questions for Ms. Navarro? Ms. Hart.
I, I just want to thank you for going to the, through the effort of, uh, putting in the job description as well as what the, uh, the need is. It's, that explanation, I think, was, was really well done and appreciate that very much. Help, help me with my thought on that, the project.
I, I also appreciated the extra in- information. I know we had public comments on these positions and it kind of ends up in one of these, um, where do you start first circles, right? Because, okay, we don't have the personnel to really start the program, to advance the programs. So we can't really wait to hire the person, but in order to see that the programs can be justified, we kind of have to hire the person. And so it's, okay, what do you do first? But I think as far, as far as our recreation programs, one of the priorities that council over the years has been, and I, I really get the feeling it's a priority for this council as well, is youth programs. Um, it took a hit a few years ago when we had a really nasty economic downturn in our city and we've never really been able to build it up to where we want to have it. And we're seeing opportunities to do that now, but staff is a little bit overworked if we're going to start thinking about some of these programs. And some of it also requires longer hours, um, than staff is authorized to work. And it's, uh, all tied up in union contracts and all that sort of stuff. But, um, if we want to keep the facilities open longer, first it's going to take a vote from council to extend the hours of that facility, but second, it's going to take a person to be there who is contracted to be there and make sure that everything is functioning properly. And so I think that is a good first step. We really want to see these programs, especially evening and afternoon, uh, for, for kids especially. But, uh, there's adult programs that, uh, could be going on as well that they may not be able to because they just can't get access to those facilities. And we, uh, all we have to do is sit down with Dennis for a couple of minutes and we can understand just, uh, how desperately he needs to help in the technology department, so. All right, any further comments or questions on this item?
I, I just want to, um.
Ms. Hart, I don't see anybody else's hand up.
Um, I was just going to say, I recently had an opportunity to, uh, take advantage of our, uh, information technology specialist, uh, both of them. Um, and, uh, and both of them were so generous with their time and trying to, to fix my situation with the, my lap, the lap, city laptop. And, uh, but it took time. It was not something that was easily just say, oh, well, you just changed your password. Well, a whole mess of things happened and the changing of the password got to be kind of, and I think there was probably about forty-five minutes total, just messing on that one thing. And then I had to call on Sunday because what the password that we'd set up didn't want to work. It was really, so I just want to say, having extra support and call, so that Dennis doesn't have to skip his motorcycle ride on Sunday. Um, I, I really think we need to approve this particular, um, unfreeze the hiring thing.
Ms. Galván.
So, um, say we approve this resolution today, how soon can you have something before council? Or do you have to wait until you have somebody in the position to change the hours?
Um, I would think that it, as Ms. Navarro said during the study session, it will probably take about six weeks really to get somebody in the position. Um, at that point is when we'll start reviewing with, well, I think during the hiring process, it'll kind of be established the expectation of the, the types of hours. So once we get that person in, we can really start developing those hours. Um, but until we actually have a body in the job, um, we probably won't bring something to you.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Um, I make the motion to approve the resolution to end the hiring freeze for the positions of recreation, uh, coordinator and information technology support assistant.
A second.
All right. We got a motion by councillor Hart, second by deputy mayor Galván, debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I, going forward, I just, I would love to see the, you know, Parks and Recs recreational supervisor, maybe once a month, giving us an update, um, if possible. You know, I'm not going to ask for every year meeting, but just to give an update.
Quarterly?
Maybe quarterly.
Maybe quarterly?
Yeah.
After each season perhaps? Probably the start of the, of the season. I think that's a good idea. And even if, even if it's through, uh, Mr. Sanchez, uh, a report about what's going on there or Mr. Martin, I'm not sure which one, Mr. Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah, so at the, um, at the end of each quarter, I can bring you a report of what's going on with, uh, recreation? If that would satisfy your request?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, I think quarterly is good.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
All right, further debate? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion carries. Positions are unfrozen. Item H, we're now to the area where we ran out of time in our study session.
So all new stuff.
And, yeah, well, we've got another page and a half to go, so. This is a long agenda tonight, folks, it's.
Who did this? Good stuff. Yes.
Good stuff. All right, item H, interpreting services. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to enter into agreement with the agency of their choice, assuming that's our choice, council's choice, for interpreting services. All right, we had before us, uh, in our packet, a series or a list of, uh, different interpreting agencies, interpreting services that are willing to provide services for us and the costs associated with them. The one that I didn't have a lot of clarity on, and maybe you know better than I do, is the one that, um, Interacto. That's the one I didn't understand the pricing quite as well. I don't know, do you, is anybody here?
Would, would you?
Mayor. Interact, Ms.
I was able to meet with the gentleman.
Awesome.
Um, so it was hard to schedule something with him because he's in Europe. So he, we, it was like eight P M. for him and it was like for us. So this is the quote, just think that this price, this five thousand, five hundred, twenty-four dollars is a month for only three meetings and your study session, your regular meeting. Those are considered two sessions. So you would pay, just today, you would pay six hundred dollars in just the, the setup.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, my.
Yeah, how about other stuff? And, um, you would have, they'd have, mm, support, so three hours per meeting. Um, project management is where they just review the agenda. We, I send it to them and they provide it over to the interpreters and, um, they just review the materials and prepare themselves and just the interpreter cost and then recording. They also said that they offer their services, just like I had mentioned, where we have a Zoom separate channel. Nothing would change, we just already have it open. Nothing would change, we just already have it open. They can have an interpreter connect to that channel and interpret there, so let's say you need, you needed to listen to the meeting, you would connect to your other Zoom channel, you would still hear your voice counsel this and then the interpreter at a higher volume so that you could still hear the tone. So they offer that without their app and all of that. They would just use our ser- uh, Zoom that we have already.
How does that affect the cost?
Um, it would just be the interpreter fee and the recording, the project management fee and a support, so it's still, yes. The other option is what we have already discussed in the past is using one of the these options, and again, they can connect to our Zoom channel, same thing. Um, my only question to you, council, is if we use an interpreter using the separate channel, what about the people that come and need an interpreter here? Would you like an interpreter in person? So if somebody came to the podium and spoke Spanish and needed to interpret it to English, the person on the Zoom channel wouldn't be able to interpret their comments.
Is that with Language Line?
Either of them. Apple Valley can do it, um, Ms. Flowers can do it, Language Line, Dynamic Language Center can do it too. They all can.
Do any, I know Apple Valley is gonna require a contract, right?
We're gonna require a contract with them.
Uh, we are gonna require.
What about the other ones? It's, is something we already have?
Yes, I have, they've all provided quotes that are ready to sign. I'd have to check with them because it has been some time since, I think the only one that's reached back out is, um, Ms. Flowers, asking if we need them yet. But we do have, uh, an agreement that can be put in place.
So basically, they all require a contract?
Yes.
How long?
Um, I, let me look.
I'm just thinking because technology changes so much.
Does.
It could be something better in a couple of months or a few months.
I don't think that they have their agreement said anything about us being exclusive to them because sometimes they're not available, so let me look at, um, Apple Valley.
It's thirty-nine miles. Forty miles.
Yeah, Kalin, for, trying to understand the Language Line, so there's public comment, um, and someone is like an interpreter. Um, could we have them already set up? Could we call them and then they can translate as?
So we can have Language Line on a separate channel for interpreting and then we can ask them to give us another interpreter to just hang out like on on the Zoom call and then they can hang up once we're done with, um, public comment.
Okay, okay, and then anybody in the audience would just have to call in?
No, we would, we would do it. We would just have them as a participant.
Oh, gotcha.
It's my idea. We can do it on the phone, but it just is better if we just have them as a regular participant and then they listen to the person's comments and then they can interpret that back to them. That's my idea if you use something like that and then do something, have the other channel for anyone wanting to listen to the whole meeting. And then you'd also determine, do you want your study sessions interpreted or and your regular ones? So.
Well, and then if a person has Zoom on their smartphone, which I think all smartphones anymore will will handle Zoom, um, then they can have their headphones in and listen to the interpreted meeting while they're in the audience, correct?
Yes.
It would be simultaneous, live streamed, whatever the current term is.
And I'm sure because of the length of our meetings, Language Line would still require us to have two people on that separate channel, ready to interpret. So we'd probably have to have three people.
Three?
One on the participant line and then two on the interpreting line.
One for public comment and two for.
Yeah.
General meeting.
Right. But the ninety dollar rate wouldn't change?
As of the last time I spoke to them, it's ninety dollars.
Okay.
So, further questions or comments from council? So none of it's gonna be cheap, but I think and and the thing is too, is what what can happen is we decide to go with somebody and it's not working out. We can either make changes with that vendor or we can find someone else and say, you know what, this isn't working, we're gonna go a different direction.
We gotta build that in the contract, correct?
Yes, we would have to make sure that's in the contract. And as Deputy Mayor said, technology changing as fast as it is, if we have to buy a whole bunch of equipment, um, that equipment is damaged or outdated in a very short period of time and it's thousands of dollars to buy that equipment.
So, um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So our problem, our challenge before us then is which of these do we want to to do?
Correct.
Okay, so even though, um, is it, it's not, I want to ask question on the Language Line, it says ninety dollars per hour, is that per interpreter?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm just wanting to clarify that, so it's still
Yes.
Mrs. Ms. Flowers does the same thing where they, it's ninety dollars per hour, per person, so it's a hundred and eighty for two. And you can choose to use their equipment or not?
Uh, Ms. Flowers would be here in person, it looks like.
Yes. Like if there's three interpreters.
Yeah, so council suggestions? Where are, where, which way are we leaning?
I'm saying Language Line.
Okay.
Same, I was just gonna say that.
Any other preferences? Not hearing anything else. Language Line at the moment is the one that I'm preferring as well, so.
But I like your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, um, I mean, we can always test it out and if things aren't working, then we can find a
We can go a different.
An alternate.
Yeah, this is kind of an evolving process. We've never had live interpreting in our meetings, um, with the company. We've done it with, uh, court, we've done it in different areas, but we haven't done it here, so we're, there's a learning curve for us and so what we might think is a great idea may not turn out to be so wonderful at all, so we're gonna try to find the best solution that we can as soon as we can.
And another question, do you want all of your meetings interpreted? Like your study sessions, your workshops, or just the regular?
Well, the the regular meeting is what covers everything that we do, so that's a must.
Correct, I would agree.
The other one's just us talking, so.
I'd say the regular meeting.
The only regular.
Yeah, I and I would agree with that, and if it becomes a need, if we notice that, um, there is a need during the study session, we can always add that in later.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, we do, we need a motion then.
Well, it says that we need an, um.
Authorization, so provide authorization.
I think we can do this without objection, can we not? Yeah, so I think the motion and then all that stuff was put in there out of habit. Maybe they had the rhythm going because there was just so much going on, but we can do this with a, with a recommendation from us, um. If there's no objection, we can just ask the city, the interim city manager to enter to agreement with Language Line and proceed forward. Any objection?
No objection.
You are so directed, sir.
Alrighty.
All right, next item, item I. Once again, it says that we have a motion, all that kind of stuff, but I don't think we do on this one. We're providing direction. City Council Study Sessions, we had talked about this earlier, um, at the end of March, it came up, do we want to continue with our study sessions? We said, let's do a couple more meetings and get a feel for it. Well, we've done those meetings now, the latest one being this evening. What is council's feelings about the study sessions prior to the regular meeting?
I like it.
Okay. Mr. Peter?
Is that gonna not have our first meeting of the month where we used to have it?
The idea of the original plan was to eliminate the workshop of the first Monday of the month.
Okay.
Which this month in April, we did have our workshop anyway, but, um, the idea is to eliminate that so that we won't have another meeting until May thirteenth. I think the date, correct, yeah. Okay, Mr. Gaban?
I I like it, it's just, um, I guess the public for some reason they haven't catch on, that we're here at five thirty, but we are here at five thirty. Uh, don't think that we're not asking questions at the six thirty meeting because we don't care, we already asked the, you know, we already asked questions at the five thirty, um, session, so. Um, going forward, just keep that in mind.
Right, and the public is invited to those study sessions. It is an open public meeting, just like this meeting is. And the intent of this, uh, because we had so many people in the public comment section of the regular meeting asking questions that were answered in the workshop or sometimes were answered during the meeting. And so in this op- this gives you an opportunity as a public to attend the study session and hear the full explanation of as much of the agenda that we can cover during that time, so that maybe your questions will be answered prior to this regular meeting and maybe you can comment on those during the public comment section, but you're gonna come in there much more informed. And the idea is to keep the public as informed as possible.
Hmm, and may I add, um, and I think once we've decided which we're gonna do now, I, um, it'll be uh, good just to back it up with with communication and then we've like now standardized this. We invite everybody to come, this is when we do the discussion and then, you know, just kind of give them a walkthrough of 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 how we are gonna continue moving forward, um, indefinitely, uh, so the people will catch on. I think, you know, the last time we had someone from the public kind of come and not really understand what was going on, but think the more that we do it and after we said it, uh, people will will catch on to what we're doing.
And I think you're correct. Um, the only objection I have to the study session, the way that we're currently doing it, is the time limitation. We have one hour to get through an agenda that in a regular meeting takes us an hour and a half, two hours, sometimes three. And so we're really trying to cram a lot in there tonight. We didn't make it through the entire agenda, but that's the only objection I have to it. So, council, just to get a general feel for it, what would you like to do going forward? You'd like to continue this process or would you like to go back to the old way and have a workshop meeting?
I would like to consider myself. I think this is a much better idea, everything's fresher in our heads. I'd just like to keep it this way.
I do too.
Me too, I agree.
I'd like to continue, but to realize that we've got to cut it short.
Well.
Okay, so I'm seeing everybody is in agreement. So we will then continue the study sessions as they are, and that does mean council, any objection to canceling the workshops going forward for the first Monday of the month?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will move forward with that with whatever vote is necessary. Do we have to do a vote on that to change that? Is it in the code?
Without objection is fine, but I will bring back, um, on your first meeting, I'll bring you an ordinance to amend the code to remove the workshops from there, so I'll cancel the first meeting of eight of May and then the next meeting you'll take action to remove that from the code.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
Perfect, thank you, everyone.
Ooh, okay.
Item J, hosting ordinances with Code Publishing. Consider approving a resolution authorizing interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Code Publishing to host and link ordinances approved by council. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Martin?
Are you?
Sorry, that was me.
Oh, it's you, gotcha, sorry. I didn't want to see what you do.
He was gonna pull out a report here, didn't he? He's prepared.
Okay, so council asked me to reach out to Code Publishing about hosting and linking ordinances to the actual code. Currently, they are hosted on our website. If you were looking at our code and wanted to look up an actual ordinance to see the signed version, you'd have to go back to our website, go to the clerk's page and look at the ordinances there. Um, and so it's seven hundred dollars to get the ordinances from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three done. And then you would authorize us to consent to, uh, to keep, I'm sorry, to continue doing that for any ordinances you've done in this year moving forward. Um, the other part is you wanted the repealed ordinances. I have not received a quote for that, so for now, I'm just bringing you the hosting and linking of those ordinances.
Um, Ms. Mayor, I'm just curious as to, um, to Jackie, um, maybe you know, or maybe, because I don't understand why we're also storing the repealed ordinances, why? Why would we do that if 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 we're, we're newer ordinances or updated ordinances, why would we need to keep track of what the repealed ones were? I don't understand.
It offers transparency to see what the past ordinances looked like and how the code changed.
Okay.
I have had several records requests that requested ordinances from the past because they wanted to see what the code looked like at that time.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I believe that is why, um, Deputy Mayor brought that up. One of the reasons, I can show you Yakima, City of Yakima is the one that, um, I could pull up really quick and they just show, um, a history of what, how their code has changed.
That that really makes sense then, after you explain it like that, because I couldn't quite wrap my head around that, but it makes perfect sense.
Well, and you imagine, though, if council changes an ordinance somewhere and somebody comes in and wants to do something, they make an application and say, well, no, you gotta do it this way this year. Well, why not last year? I had to do it this way. Why did this change? What's going on? We could pull it up and say, on this date, council changed the ordinance to do this and it reflects this law or this new change in the, in the state. And so it does really help people and Mr. Ruddy, you're gonna add to that.
Back to the public records request situation with this, there has been two court rulings within the last five years which require that the cities have available, um, previous versions of statutes and ordinances enacted in case just records request for that.
Okay.
And so having it available to supply, because you don't need even paper versions of this anymore. You can simply direct them to where the electronic version is available for them to go ahead and view. And so when the city has that available, it eliminates cost for all that, but it's also required by the court.
Awesome, okay, that makes sense. Thank you, thank you for the extra explanation on that, appreciate it.
Further questions or comments? Okay, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve?
Second it.
All right, we've got a motion by Deputy Mayor Galan, second by Counsel Ripley to approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Code Publishing to host and link ordinances approved by councils. There's a debate on this item.
Well, considering all of the comments and and explanations of why we, uh, how we want to do this, I think it's a really an efficient way of keeping track of our ordinances, so. I I'm I'm really in favor of that then.
Further debate? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. A two vote aye, motion passes. Item K, budget amendment number one, consider adopting an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four budget, Mr. City Manager.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mayor and Council. Um, this is our first budget amendment for twenty twenty-four. Um, the main things that were being adjusted through this amendment is truing up, um, the ending fund balances from twenty twenty-three and transferring over pro- capital projects and large purchases that were slated for the end of twenty twenty-three, but transferred over into twenty twenty-four. Um, the only other item that we had here outside of those things was, um, the well eleven, twelve and thirteen, uh, project that you guys approved earlier um, in replacement of the skyline, uh, reservoir painting project and then the fire engine financing that basically came in and out of Fund Three Twenty-Six. Um, that's just basically a record-keeping thing we've got to do. But I am available for any other questions.
Questions or comments for Ms. Horner? Bishop Gaban?
So on the general finances, uh, negative nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, can you explain a little bit what the?
Sure, just one sec. Oh, you're talking about in the, yeah, okay, so tho- those are the changes, that encapsulates just the changes. So when we, um, when we finished our budget this year, we budgeted our beginning fund balance to be a little bit higher than what it is just for the general fund. And some of that, I think, had to do with some of those ARPA purchases that did go through, that we weren't sure if they were gonna happen in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. So there's just some housekeeping with those things, um, that happens every year at the end. The other project that that sort of transferred over like that was the Sixth Street project. So there were, um, and that's actually in the street fund, but that's where that negative five hundred thousand is in the street fund side. So we had expected to have the beginning fund balance at a different amount, not knowing when those those purchases were gonna come out.
For example, on the street fund, um, the two thousand twenty-four street fund, beginning balance is one point five million. This just means that it's.
Yeah, so if
One million? More or less?
Yeah, so if, um, Jackie were to scroll down to the second page of the resolution, this is actually the updated uh, keep going, right there. So that's our updated actual amount. So we're adjusting what we had previously budgeted to this amount here, and that encapsulates those changes.
Got you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, under state law, we always have to have a balanced budget, and so this budget amendment's a regular thing that we do throughout the year in order to maintain a balanced budget.
Hmm.
Just, it's ironic that the state requires us to always have a balanced budget. The state doesn't seem to be so concerned about it for itself.
That's exciting.
Further questions?
One more.
Go ahead.
So on that one right there, on the general fund, the ending balance is two point six. How much of that is ARPA?
Uh, for twenty twenty-four, none of that is ARPA. Because we have, we are expected to spend all of our ARPA by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Further questions? Hearing none. What is the desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion by Deputy Mayor Galan, second by Counselor Hart, to adopt the ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four budget. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. By two vote aye, motion passes. Item L, Salgado annexation to Yakima Boundary Review Board. Consider approving a resolution authorizing for the annexation of parcel number two, three, one, zero, one, nine, two, three, four, zero, four, with the zoning of R three high-density residential, and prior to the city council taking final action on this annexation, the notice of intention is to be completed by the Community and Economic Development Director and submitted to Yakima Boundary Review Board for a forty-five day review period. Mr. City Manager?
I think this one is Mr. Martin's.
It is Mr. Martin, yes.
So, uh, um, I, some of you have seen this before, um. So what I have before you is really one of the last steps in the, in an annexation proj- project. Uh, Mr. Salgado has submitted an application to the city to have a p- port piece of property um, north of the school off of, um, Washout Road annexed into city limits. It went through the planning commission. The planning commission determined, um, that it should come into the city as R three, which is high-density residential. So at this point, we need to forward it on to the Yakima County Boundary Review Board, and they do what's called a notice of intention or an NOI. So they will send this out to various communities, cities, other jurisdictions to, um, see if there's any sort of issues with it. Um, generally not, because it's in our growth area, our growth area, it's kind of, um, isolated to to Sunnyside, um. After that forty-five day review period, they'll give us a letter that that says there's there's, yeah, somebody has has some concerns with it, or there's no concerns with it, and we'll we'll take that. Generally, there's no concerns, and we'll bring it to council for a final action to annex it within the city of Sunnyside. So this is, yeah, just the second to last step at this point in time.
Questions for Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Miss Fausto?
Uh, just to understand the process, this is just to annex, um, and then at any given, at which point do we understand exactly, do we get to vote on what they would want to use? I know it says high residential or high-density residential here, but
It it depends on the use. So we, the city of Sunnyside does have a s- a series of, we're we're, we have series of permitted uses and a series of conditional uses. So it just really depends on what uh, the property owner, the developer, applicant wants to do on this property. If they want to bring, if they want to subdivide it, it depends on how many lots they want to subdivide it into. If they, um, so there's there's, it just, there's a very variety of factors that go into it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if it's that one that has kind of the light blues.
That's the one.
Okay, I I was thought it was, but I all afternoon I was trying to figure that one out. So so it actually then you're kind of leveling off for the group, where where the, uh, growth area is.
It's it's pretty, pretty close, yeah. There's a few more, uh, parcels to the north, I think, like three or four more.
Okay, okay.
And there are sewer and water services available to the site, so that's something we do, are available at this point in time.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? All right, hearing none. What's the desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing for the annexation of parcels numbers, uh, twenty-three, ten, nineteen, twenty-three, forty-four with the zoning of R three high-density residential, and prior to the city council taking final action on this annexation, the notice of intention is to be completed by Community and Economic Development Director and submitted to the Yakima County, uh, Yakima Boundary Review Board for a forty-five day review period.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you for reading that for me, because all right, motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Beeler. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. By two vote aye, motion passes. Item M, Yolanda Phillips' final annexation action. Consider adopting an ordinance annexing parcel number two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, four, zero, two into the city of Sunnyside. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Martin?
Uh, good evening, City Council. Uh, this, so this is what the final action looks like. So if you scroll down a little bit in the packet, there is a letter that comes back from the Boundary Review Board, and that's kind of what it looks like, saying that there's no, there's no findings, there's nothing there. Um, so once, once we get that letter back, um, then we we move it forward to the city council for the li- the final process. Uh, for the the Phillips annexation, uh, this is, um, this is off of Allen Road, just on the south side of Allen, uh, across from the church. Um, they they want to come into the city as PUD, which is Planned Unit Development. There's no, I don't think there's any action at this point in time, but they wanted to move the parcel in the, in the city. Um, other than that, everything has gone through, and, um, I'm just asking council to final, finalize the annexation.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Martin?
Um, would you explain the PUD?
Yep, so it's Planned Unit Development, so it's it's a very flexible zoning designation that we have, uh, that allows for a variety of things depending on the future use of the property. Uh, because this property is in an interesting and unique area, um, we, uh, we allowed them, our, I said, planning commissioner allowed them, I wanted to allow them the flexibility to either be residential in the future or commercial in the future, given their location and the availability of their sewer and water services are available to the site. They do have some commercial abutting them, but they also do have some residential abutting them, so it's just allowed them that flexibility into the future.
Okay.
Further questions, Mr. Galan?
Um, later on in the future, say they want to switch it, can they switch zoning?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, yep, they'll go through a rezone process with the city.
Yeah, got you. Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none. What's the desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve?
A second.
All right, motion by Deputy Mayor Galan, second by Counselor Fausto, to adopt an ordinance annexing parcel number two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, four, zero, two, into the city of Sunnyside. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. By two vote aye, motion passes. Item four, items from council members, appointments for boards and commissions. We have received some applications, and I am grateful for them. I hope that um, you had a chance to review them, especially just your deputy mayor and Miss Hart, as we're going to be taking a look at those applications here, and I would like to set a time for a meeting for us to meet this week, if that works for your schedule. Um, well, tomorrow. I have a meeting at two o'clock at City Hall. Before or after that, I'm fine.
You want to do it after, three?
I left my phone in my car, so I don't know what my schedule.
Just clear it out.
Your wife leave already?
Yeah.
My wife always knows my schedule a lot more than I do, I say.
Uh, I could check it afterwards and
Okay, you shoot us a text and let us know.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
But let's plan on tomorrow afternoon at three until we hear otherwise from Deputy Mayor. And we will go over that list of applications. But we are still receiving applications as well, and so I look forward to members of the community filling out those applications, wanting to be part of boards and commissions. This is an excellent way to get to know what's going on in the city, and if you ever have dreams of someday serving on city council, this is a great introduction to what the process is like and and the ways you can impact the city for good, and so, and yeah, I encourage you to do so. Um, we really appreciate your help. All right, other reports and announcements or questions by council, and as always, I'm gonna start on the far end with Mr. Beeler.
I went and watched the unveiling of the float again this year.
And I had to miss that.
It was wonderful. Them kids and the parents and the volunteers, they they nailed a good one this year.
I'm glad to hear that. I do understand that at the Cherry Festival, they had a little problem keeping it motivated. It wasn't running well, but, uh, I saw the pictures and the float itself is beautiful.
I like that theme.
I I I would like to sometime find a way that we can perhaps help them improve the drivetrain, because it does seem to be giving them regular problems, and I don't know what the city can get away with doing as far as gifting of public funds and that kind of stuff. We have to be careful.
You guys did, um, provide five thousand dollars this year, and I, they have turned in some receipts for, I'm not sure if it dealt with any of the mechanical stuff, but they did turn in a bunch of receipts um, for the five thousand dollars for float that you guys, um, approved in this year's budget out of, uh, community projects, community events. And then they also got the two thousand dollars from LTAC, um, that they'll have.
Yeah. So, all right, is that all, Mr. Martin? I missed her. Mr. Beeler? I know. It's stuck in my brain right now. All right, Miss, uh, Ripley.
Um, animal control. I was wondering, are we doing animal control for Grandview still?
Yes, we have a contract with Grandview. It's part-time, uh,
They just sign a contract?
Yep, she's a City of Sunnyside employee, and she works over there part-time. Yep, so it's about fifty-fifty time-wise.
Okay, um, do they have any, uh, dog houses over there, you know, any way to house them over there, so we have more?
This is a county-wide problem. Um, I've had several meetings with, uh, Zillow, Tappanish, Yakima, Moxie, Union Gap, the Sheriff's Office, um, Grandview, Granger. Everybody's in the same boat. We have no place to take our dogs. So, um, they've all heard bits and pieces of our meetings, and they've all individually reached out to me asking for space if we build a shelter. So, um, I I've talked with Jameson about this, and and I said, there's no way that for the first six months, we would even consider it until we got our issues taken care of. Uh, we would take our ours in Grandview because that's who we have the contract with, but after that, we could, you know, see how things are going and maybe consider it, but.
He's referring to the railroad, um, retrofit.
Right.
For that, but it depending on the engineering and what we get back, if we do get sort of a guideline of what we think it would cost if we wanted to look at that as a permanent site, which we could do and still allow the fire department, you know, all that stuff could theoretically fit. Anyway, if we have a number, then we can go out to those jurisdictions and start asking, um, and fundraising that way, because you guys did put the um, our, some ARPA money towards that, so that was fantastic. Um, so I'm hopeful that they would do the same.
I appreciate you reaching out to all the other cities and
Yeah, we've been, well, I have a chief's meeting Thursday morning, so we'll, I'm sure it'll be a topic that gets brought up. It's every meeting, so.
The temptation is just to send it to Benton County, isn't it? That was very much tongue-in-cheek for anybody who's wondering. All right.
To the, um, the police and the fire chiefs, uh, maneuvers on Friday. And that was just awesome to see how how that all works together. It was the bus accident and that, I mean, the kids even had blood on their face, and it was, it was really, it was really cool. Eye-opener. I'll let them tell the rest.
That was awesome. Miss Fausto?
Uh, yeah, no, thank you for the invite. I think it was great. Um, I think, uh, uh, Deputy Mayor Galvan and I were probably just counting our blessings that we weren't having to do all of that this time around, but we got to watch the experts actually in action. Um, yeah, one of the, one of the firefighters brought out one of like the big tools. It's like, what does it look like?
Jaws of life.
Jaws of life? Okay, well, I had to carry that during fire ops, so I'm like, that, yeah. Almost weighs as much as me or probably more. Um, but yeah, great event. And then, um, uh, I have nothing else to add, other than, um, we went to the, uh, ribbon cutting, um, the Sunnyside Pharmacy today, so welcoming them into i- into the community as a newly opened business, and I was their second purchase of the morning, buying my mom some Theraflu because she's under the weather. Yeah, she's living under the weather, so. Um, but yeah, I was a good grand opening and, um, good to witness.
Bingo. Yeah, forget the bingo.
Oh, yes, and then we did bingo with the assisted living, uh, Sunnyside Assisted Living. Oh, there we are, yeah. And then, yeah, we did bingo. I I did request some of those pictures, so Yacalina, I'll get them to you. Uh, they just sent them to me, um, earlier today. Uh, and it was good. It was good to d- uh, meet, uh, the community, uh, members there at the Sunnyside Assisted Living. It was really great. There was a couple of them that kept falling asleep on us, so, yeah, it kind of made me feel boring. Yeah. Gotta come in with some more action next time, but I mean, it's a really good community and really good to be a part of, and thank you all for attending. Thank Counselor Ripley, Deputy Mayor, and, uh, myself, and then, um, Counselor Vaskis came in later on. Yeah. So, great time.
And that was it for me. Time, the deputy mayor had left.
Yeah, he had already left, so there was no coin. But we, we, we still announced it, though.
It had that one, of course, yeah.
Yeah, Julie, you're carrying the scissors wrong. You're gonna cut yourself there.
I've keeping them closed.
That's not good.
The thing we know about Miss Hart, though, she's not running with them at least.
Yeah, hopefully not.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
Um, well, one, number one complaints I get from residents is their high water bill. Um, is there something, I know the city of Grandview has like a water test leak or 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 maybe some uh, information for for our residents, um, just because I I was helping this this particular resident, and back when it was pretty low, he was at ten CCFs, was was, it was about seventy-five hundred gallons that he would spend, you know, he was utilizing. And all of a sudden in August, and all the way till recently, he was, uh, wasting about thirty thousand gallons of water. Um, because he had a water leak, I, you know, uh, explained to him, he had to turn off all his wa- all his faucets and 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 see if the meter was was still, uh, moving. So if you think about it, you know, that's, that's a lot of water. That's, that's being spent and wasted, and and, you know, here we are, the previous council meetings, you know, talking about spending to get more wells because we need more water, so, um, I think maybe some sort of education for our residents as to how to do that. Um, I know that maybe this, I think the city offered to go out there, but i- i- if we're able to educate them, maybe we'll eliminate that, that, that step. Um, just, you know, let's just say five hundred homes, you know, we're we're doing the same. That's ten million gallons per month. That's, you know, going down the drain. Um, so, yeah, let's, uh, see what we could come up with. Uh, I don't know, maybe a video explaining how to, how to check for leaks and maybe a some sort of a kit they can take home.
And that, that is a good thought, Mr. Deputy Mayor, um. Also, there is a company, they're out of Spokane, but they're in the valley all the time, and they do leak detection. Um, your plumber should be able to put you in contact with them or any of the, uh, remedial restoration companies that are out there, whether it's, um, oh, I don't know, Clean Image or Baxter Construction, or any of the others that are out there that run, I just, this is a couple of random names that pop into my mind. These are companies that I end up working with because of my business. Um, but there is a leak detection company out of Spokane. I don't know the name of that, because by the time I get to the project, that's already been taken care of. I do the cleanup afterwards. Um, they're down in the valley all the time. It's not like it's a huge trip for them to come from Spokane, but they're just based there. But a video to help customers, uh, citizens of the city probably would be helpful. Shut off all your faucets, check your meter. Is it still turning? Um, I know I will be having to use them shortly because I, I know where my leak is. I know that it's there, but, uh, I just have to get it fixed. So this winter was hard on my outside plumbing, and I'm sure other people have suffered from some of that too. I've heard some of the complaints. I've seen some of the posts on Facebook. People are not happy with their water bill.
Yeah.
And, um, then I got mine, and that's when I discovered my leak as well, so I, I can commiserate.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And some, and sometimes, it's not that they have a har- high water bill, it's that they have a leakage somewhere.
Yeah. All right, Miss Hart?
Just, just to reiterate on the leaks, I, you know, I always had a leaky faucet somewhere in the house. And and I would cast my son-in-law to come over and change the, uh, the little rubber thingy-majiggy that goes in there, then I get rid of the leak. But that does, really, I had a you know, checking for leaks, really, I like that idea of doing something to have the citizens check that themselves, because that's a, that's a toughie. Okay, so I missed the mask cab casualty thing. I'm so sorry, but the pictures Okay, so I missed the mass cab casualty thing. I'm so sorry, but the pictures that the school district took and the ones that the newspaper took were wonderful. I had a. I don't think I could have got around out there. I understand the ground is pretty bumpy out there and uh that would have been kind of tough. And uh, but. Really great participation. Um, I, I think that's a wonderful thing. I, I will try again when we do that again sometime. Um, to see how all the different equipment works, how the, all the different, uh, what do you call it? Uh, the triage that goes on too. That's very cool. Um, I did go to the ribbon cutting today. As you can see by the thing, I did not run with the scissors. They're pretty, pretty heavy. And we did have a bit of a corn there, but you notice how we split ourselves up? And we just talked about donuts and, and pharmacy stuff. They had a lot of food. It's, it's really wonderful. These are hometown boys who've decided to go build, open their own. Uh, family-owned rest uh pharmacy. And it's just an awesome, they're very nice young men.
Yeah. And Udi was, I went to high school, graduated high school with him. So it was really, it was like a full circle moment to be able to be there.
Well, all three brothers are there. Look, there's the one who's in real estate and then there's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're all doing great things. Yeah. The pharmacist, a real estate agent, yeah, own businesses around here.
Yeah. There's, and there's everybody who was there, all, all the whole gang.
Like the moment they cut it, there we go.
It's fun. Okay, that's all I got.
Well, thank you all for your reports. You know, I, I had planned for several months to be gone this past weekend. And so I was Friday and Saturday. And as a result of that, I missed uh bingo. I missed the car show. I missed the mass casualty event. And I feel kind of bad about that. It's like all these cool things going on this weekend. I'm glad there was good council participation there because I was out of town. Um, and then working this morning, I couldn't uh, I couldn't reschedule that particular job. So thank you all, council members, for being there and representing council. These are things that are important to us as council and as a community as a whole. Um, new businesses and the, the car show for the senior class and. Then meeting, greeting, interacting with the community at senior um, senior nursing home or what is the place called? I, I think of it as Sun Terrace. Sunny Side Assisted Living. In my mind, it will always be Sun Terrace. And so they will have to change the name back eventually because I'm just gonna be stubborn. But at any rate, I'm glad you guys were able to do that. I, I attend, I was there one time for a special event and I realized where a lot of my customers were, why people had stopped calling me because they're at Sun Terrace. I recognize the name at every table. And uh, so it was great to be able to interact with those folks and I still know quite a few people there. So. It would have been great to been able to hang out with them a little bit. Some of these people I've known for years. So. I did attend a meeting with individual from the home program, which is a Yakima County organization and they. Asked me to attend a meeting and I just want to share a little bit what the home program is. The Home Investment Partnerships was established with the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. To preserve and develop decent and affordable housing for low-income households. Any investment of home funds must result in permanent affordable housing for low or very low income households. Home funds are intended to be used as gap funding. This means that home funds should be used to spur the development of affordable housing. By supplementing other available sources of financing such as private investment and other grant pro- or program funding that otherwise would not be sufficient without the added financial resources from the home program. And some of the different programs that they offer, although they focus only on two of these, um, but they're, they have four different things that they can work on. One of them is homeowner rehabilitation where the entire house must be brought up to local codes. It's kind of an all or nothing approach. Um, examples, repair, replace major systems such as roof, foundations, plumbing, HVAC and windows. Um, another one is home buyer, new construction or rehabilitation, construct new affordable housing, purchase and rehab an existing house for sale or for resale. Or provide down payment assistance. Um, then rental development, new construction, rehabilitation or conversion to rental. And then tenant-based rental assistance, that's direct assistance, security, utility, deposit, rent payments intended as short-term assistance. And they're really working more on the uh new construction and um homeowner rehabilitation. Right now, they're talking about multifamily housing, but I don't know that that's necessarily a long-range goal, but that's some of the projects that they're working on right now. They asked me to participate on the board and if there's no objection from council, I would like to um accept that invitation. Um, this is a project that's kind of exciting to me. I, I really liked the idea. Right now, they have been working with Habitat for Humanity and Catholic Charities. And so that they are somewhat involved in Sunnyside already. And I'd like to see more of that money come to Sunnyside for affordable home, for individuals. Um, I continue to see on Facebook, people looking for housing, looking for a room, looking for anything that has a roof over the, over it to, in order to keep their family. And I really would love for us to be able to provide more. Low-income housing for these individuals and have things available. So I will then formally accept that invitation to serve on that and uh continue to report back to you.
That's it.
That's all I have.
I just want to mention too, I forgot too, that there were the executive board for the YV cog uh met last Monday. And I did attend that. And I was really glad, you know, we had in the conversation tonight and last council meeting about the transportation monies. And so they were talking about what the one that we just approved tonight. Um, they were talking about the ones that were already been approved up in Seela. There was one and there was one and um. Wapato that was already funded kind of through the same process as what we just approved. Um, so it's. There's, it, there's competition, there's competition, but the money's there. So I was, did want to mention it and I think you come in for a little bit to listen on it too. But it was um, it's very interesting that they, they are very put together on what they're doing.
Yes, they have.
But I did, I did just want to mention that. I'm sorry, I forgot to do it during the time.
And I just want to go on record as saying that yes, there are other communities that were applying for these funds, but Sunnyside deserves it more.
Exactly right.
Very clear up.
But yes.
Item C, upcoming council meetings. I'm not at all biased. Upcoming council meetings, we need to cancel our May sixth, twenty twenty-four workshop and it's probably a good thing because we'll all be exhausted from the Cinco de Mayo. May thirteen, Adam City Clerk.
Okay. You'll review chicken ordinance, the, a chicken ordinance, fireworks and yard sales and update the fee schedule and just an ordinance to cancel the workshop meetings on our code.
Okay, and then May twenty-seven.
May twenty-seventh, stormwater rate analysis and water system plan. Those may be moved depending on when they hear back from the Department of Health. But um, for now that, well, we've just said it there for now.
Okay.
A, a question on, isn't it supposed to be not the Monday? Uh, uh, because that's Memorial Day, but Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
On, okay, yes. Yep, the twenty-eighth. You're right.
Oh, good.
It, it was, it was in the agenda, but I just noticed it was not on there. Okay.
Good catch. All right. And once again, council reminder that if you have anything that needs to be added to the agenda, please get it to the clerk or manager. Um, no later than the Wednesday before the meeting. All right, item from department heads, Mr. City Manager.
Started that in Mr. Wall.
No updates for you guys at this moment. Maybe next.
Aw, man.
Hey, just a quick update. We had thirty-two closed tickets this week and I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but just like uh. Counsel Hart mentioned, the simplest things that, hey, reset a password sometimes is a quick five-minute job. And sometimes it's, you know, forty-five minutes or an hour, depending on if you're remote or whatever. So even though it doesn't seem like a lot, it is actually a lot of time spent that way. So, thank you.
Actually, take it back. Sorry, actually, take it back. Um, as an update, we did have uh entry-level fire department interviews this morning. This is um phase one of um. Chief Harbick, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Believe we have two more phases after this until we finalize um moving forward with our applicants. And then later on this week, we will also have. Entry-level police department interviews to fill those vacant positions. So we are moving along and, and filling those positions that are open in all city departments.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say in response to uh changing the study session that. We got through fourteen items on the active agenda today and it's still not even nine. So even though it seems like we've been here for a really long time, like. We got through that entire agenda, like that's pretty amazing. So anyway, I think that's a good call and it shows. Even though we don't get through it all in the study session, I mean, we got through a ton of business. So good job, guys.
Guys, good job, guys.
Yeah. Seriously, I think it's the biggest agenda since I have been here since two thousand and twenty-one. I don't recall a larger one.
I think so too. I think so too.
So, very well done.
Thanks to all the department heads for making, making it all come together for us. Appreciate that.
Um, I am looking to schedule a uh finance and admin subcommittee meeting um for the second quarter. And so. I'm looking at the ninth of May at four P M. So those of you who are on that subcommittee, um, I'll send, and it's actually um Counsel Ripley. Deputy Mayor Galvane and Counsel Vasquez, who's not here tonight, but I'll be sending out an, an invite for that. If it doesn't work. I don't have it on my calendar.
Come out that day.
Nikes. I forgot about that. Okay.
Cause I just put it on.
Okay, the next, um, I'm, we did our most recent one on Thursday um at four P M. It seemed to work for everyone's schedule. So. Um, the next Thursday after that, that would be the sixteenth, um, which is what I'll, I'll send that out for. Thank you for the reminder, sir. And I did see that you registered for me just that last week. I shouldn't put it on my calendar. Okay. Um, I wanted to touch base with Deputy Mayor Galvane. I do apologize for not getting back to you on your, some of your utility billing questions that um, that. The city manager had forwarded on to me. Um, I do want to make sure that you're aware that you can tell people um between my department and Rawls, we do have the ability to do leak checks for people. All they need to do is call the city and ask. Um, and we'll do this and it doesn't cost them anything. We'll send um a water department staff person out. To check for a leak. They have to be, there has to be somebody home, but basically they'll, we'll have you turn all of your water off and they'll check and make sure that the meter is still working. So um, we do do that.
Well, that's better than the company I was talking about because they would charge you considerably for that service.
And we can't go into your house, obviously, so we can't really help you pinpoint because I, I'm with you. I have a leak at my house that I know about and I don't know where it is either.
Know exactly where it is.
Oh, I don't know where mine is.
I found it. I just, so.
Um, anyway, but we do have that. And then there are a couple of reports that um, that come out every year that do sort of go over some of those leak issues. One's called the Water Use Efficiency Report and one's called the Consumer Confidence Report. And the city usually sends out notifications for those on people's water bills when those come out. So just an FYI. But I do think having a video on our website would be an amazing idea. Um, we also tend to get the dye tabs that people can throw in the back of their toilets. Um, I don't know if we have any at City Hall right now, or if you guys have any in the trucks, but we do get those in big boxes every now and then and, and have them available for people. Um, currently. I am working on finishing the SLFRF report, which is due on the thirtieth of this month. That's our ARPA report to the federal government that I have to um file every year. And then our annual report, our financial statements is due at the end of May. Um, hoping to have that. Uh, submitted before that and hope to have most of the information. To present to the Finance and Administration Subcommittee um at that subcommittee meeting, which will now be the sixteenth instead of the ninth. Um, we also have in my department, the software migration in our financials and we're hoping to have that whole system for financials only. So that's our A P. Cash receipting and general ledger stuff completed by the end of May. It's a huge project, so it's been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. We'll hope that we get there. And then the stormwater rate transition, I am again putting on the agenda for May twenty-eighth. I'm. It is so much more complicated than I thought. Um, getting a database that we can match addresses to that shows the size of a parcel. In order to charge the way that they want to with the E R U at all the different levels is very complicated. And so it is just taking time. Um, and then also just an FYI, we do have three open union contracts, but the clerk contract, they did vote on it recently. So. We'll be probably bringing that to you at the next meeting on the active agenda, but I do believe we'll be discussing some of that um in executive session later to brief you on it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so by the end of this week, we should be done with the painting at the pool house. It's looking really good. They're working on the inside and it's looking great. Um, so they said they would be done probably by this Friday. Um. If everything goes well. Uh, the other thing too is um, I talked to S V I D because we talked earlier uh about extending that fence at the, at the pool. Um, for allowing seating outside. And so S V I D, I gotta work through the permitting with them, but um, they don't, they said that would probably be good because we're gonna be encroaching into their. Um, East Mid there. But as far as extending the pool fence, we would be able to, we just have to go through the, just fill out a permit with them. So I'll be working with that as something that we discussed earlier to allow.
Great.
Families to be able to sit in the, in the grassy area inside the fence.
Yeah, S V I D owns that ditch.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, Mr. I just had a conversation with, with the constituent um earlier today about doing that. And I was gonna follow up with an email, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, my connect.
Um, we met out there last week and so, yeah, they gave me the uh, the approval.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, we're working on that. Um, I also wanted to let you know that I'll be going on vacation May first through the tenth. And Deputy uh Public Work Director, um Andrew Robinson will be um handling the day-to-day stuff. So if anything comes up, just let him know. Um, I'll be out of state and I'll be back uh the thirteenth on Monday.
Okay. Oh, Chief Lehman isn't filling in for you since he fills in for. Not taking this one.
And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just a few things. So just permits quickly. So the, the department has issued a hundred and sixteen permits, done three hundred and thirty-nine inspections and collected a little over sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue so far this year. Um, we are working on our comp plan update that is gearing up fairly shortly. Um, so I will be submitting a, a grant to. The Department of Commerce probably within the next two weeks. Uh, the state has allocated a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the. For the city of Sunnyside. All we really need to do is apply. So we will do that and get those funds. Um. Currently also working on the climate resilience element. So again, if you have anybody who wants to be part of the advisory team, uh, that, please let them know and we can get going on that. Uh, our graffiti trailer is finished. So we, we got a trailer recently and it's our abatement trailer that we can, in, in an effort to beat up. Or not beat up the truck so much, we, we got a trailer and we outfitted, we had a, we had a paint sprayer and we kind of got it all up and running again. So now we can. Um, spray the, the side of a building in about two minutes and it's actually really cool. So we just get it covered, get it out and get in and out of there. And um, it's pretty efficient than standing there with a bunch of rattle cans. Um, making little gray squares. Agree with graffiti over graffiti. Yes. So we can actually. Paint an entire fence panel or paint the entire side of a wall and it just, it just looks a lot better, a lot cleaner. Um. And then we have also had a few more requests for that, than we have funds for revolving loan funds. So I'm gonna kind of do a little bit of a, an assessment on that this week. And I'll probably get together with uh Jameson here in a, in a little bit to kind of talk about that and, and what our options might be and, and present that to you. Cause we. We had, I think, two or three more people than the last three to four business days come in and ask about those funds. Uh. Apparently, it's, it's being well-received right now. So uh, I do, I, I do want to explore any additional options. If we do have them, I want to explore them. So that's, that's kind of all I have um for you at this time.
Thank you.
Uh, I, we, real quick, so um, if, if you would like to, we have a docket tomorrow, uh, criminal docket. Um, it goes all day. Um, starting at, at ten A M. Tomorrow and continuing to the afternoon. You, you're more welcome to observe. Um, it's open to the public. So we want to make sure. Council's aware that they're always welcome to attend. I know you're all busy, but they're open to the public. If you want to see how prosecution works, um, there is one every week, but our main day is always Tuesdays. So.
Where?
Right here.
Oh, he, what time?
It starts at ten A M. With the arraignments, um, but the actual uh cases will go through the afternoon.
Oh, could we just show up anytime?
Anytime, it's open to the public, so. If I don't stay here unless something bad happens. Real, real quick, I want to make an announcement. Uh. To, um, there was a shooting today at Wiley Elementary in West Richland where there was a homicide involved. There's a second homicide involving the same suspect. The guy's name is Elias uh Weezer. Uh, he is driving supposedly a two thousand nine Toyota Corolla with Washington plate C B Z four seven four five. He's still at large and thought to be headed west. So. Be aware, um, I, I just got the press release in Bolton from our, our. Be aware, um, I I just got the press release and the bulletin from our from our prosecutor office.
We've been watching that for several hours. Uh, there's, there was two other vehicles named at one point. All the vehicles are entered in our flock system, so our officers are watching for them, so.
Okay, you see that, uh, call it in because.
What was the shooting?
At William Wiley uh Elementary in West Richland.
Did he shoot it like that?
He, I don't know who the homicide involved.
It sounds like it's an adult. Uh, he shot an adult there, and then they found another adult at a residence, so.
So be aware if you see a two thousand nine silver. Corolla, uh, it could be this person, so feel free to call it in. I I just got this from our prosecuting office, and so. That's all I have.
All right, well, first I'd like to start off by saying thank you very, very much to everybody who attended our our uh our drill this last Friday. Uh, very labor-intensive, but uh I would like to on record, real quick, kind of give a shout out and give credit where credit's due. Um, we wouldn't have been able to do it with um not only our respective agencies, but also the Sunnyside School District. Particularly the Security Department and the High School Drama Clubs. You mentioned the the good, the good blood. It was all fake blood, pinky promise. Um, that was a courtesy of the High School Drama Department who did a fantastic job. Uh, they were very dramatic in their injuries, so it was fantastic. Um, and then the Sunnyside uh School District Transportation Office, that was a big benefit. Uh, shout out to my Assistant Chief Chad Denbor, who um did a lot of the coordinating on our end, as well as Yakima County Fire District Five and Valley Fire Dispatch. I'm gonna let Chief Lehman give kudos to law enforcement. I won't steal that from him. Um, but a big thank you to all those players involved. That's what made it. What I believe to be a pretty neat event is very beneficial for, I think, um, everybody involved. Um. Uh, in addition, we took final, final delivery of our new pumper this morning. It should be in service running calls as soon as tomorrow afternoon. Um, just finishing up some final things. However, with that, um, as we kind of mentioned some prior meetings before. Uh, we definitely wanted uh conduct a pushing-in ceremony, which is very uh much a um. Uh, tradition in the fire service, and so as of now, unless there's any major objection, we want to make it available to everybody. Uh, we have Saturday, May fourth at eleven A M. Scheduled, um, try not to conflict with any of the uh Cinco de Mayo festivities. Our events, um, so keep it a little bit earlier in the day, but hopefully allow some for some decent foot traffic. Uh, eleven A M. It's kind of what we're shooting for right now, Counselor, but uh. But um we're definitely open to suggestions. If if that seems a conflict or something not aware of, um, we definitely want to make it as accessible and open to the public as possible, so we can have as. Hopefully as many as uh attendees as possible, so we're very excited and hopefully our community is as well. Uh, a couple of quick things this year to date, emergency call responses, we're at one thousand two hundred and seventy or seven, excuse me. Uh, emergency calls for service, um, a hundred and forty-eight, eight of which have been in the last week. Just an update there, that's all I have.
Yeah, wow. Just wanted to remind you of the Spirit of Sunnyside event happening Friday, April twenty-sixth at six thirty. Some councils, council members have already. Come from, they will be attending. If anybody else would like to, please let me know. Plans have changed, let me know, or Marino. Um, I also want to remind you of the lighthouses, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes happening Saturday, April twenty-seventh. So that is it for me.
Okay, uh, the mass casualty uh training uh deal, so what happened there was the. School district got two free electric buses on a grant, but had to disable two diesel buses, so the. Safety and Security Director Glosson approached me and and uh. We came up with a training that encompassed the Police and Fire Department. And we're able to bring out all the bus drivers. It was done on a day there was no school, so that they were able to learn what was expected from our end. And what would look like if there was an actual bus crash and how they would round up the kids and things like that, so um that went really well, so yeah, like Fire Chief said. Um, big kudos to the school district. Um. June fourteenth, the foundation is gonna have a movie in the park, so that's gonna be on the last day of school. It's Friday. Um, July fourth, there's gonna be a barbecue in the park with a couple of businesses donating, um. And then August sixteenth, if anybody golfs, there's gonna be a silent auction fundraiser golf tournament uh that the foundation puts on out here at Black Rock. Um, there's been a free library put up over at the community center. Um, that was in conjunction with uh. Stein's Ace Hardware, the owners of Stein's Ace Hardware out in West Valley are related to the the owners of Ace Hardware here, and they approached uh. Us with the free library, so I got ahold of Raul and his staff and and we got that put up over at the community center, so that's up and operational. Um, the foundation is purchasing trading cards, so they'll like be like baseball cards for a select number of officers to get started. And those, we'll see those rolling out here before too much longer. And then real quick on stats, everything's in the normal range, uh, simple assaults are down um twenty-eight percent. Uh, this month, we've had five hundred and fifty-seven incidents, a hundred and thirty-nine traffic stops, fifty-four arrests. Thirty-two criminal non-traffic, twenty-nine criminal traffic, and twenty-eight uh traffic infractions issued, so stand for any questions.
All right. You're a rookie card, that's cool.
Miss, Mister, uh, Mister, Mister City Manager, um, you're doing a barbecue in the park, Central Park on July fourth?
Yes, it's gonna be uh earlier in the day, probably like eleven to one, maybe, or something like that.
Okay, I I need to know that because we're gonna have the fireworks later that.
So if somebody has something with family or whatever, they'll be able to go attend that.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. I'm consistently impressed with what all of you and your departments are doing. Um, you continue to make this a great place to live, and you are great contributors to this community, so thank you for all of that. Um, I just keep entering things on my calendar as I listen to you talk, which.
I know.
Has me concerned with time availability early.
Wow.
All right, so our next item of business is an executive session slated last fifteen minutes to review negotiations on the performance of a. Publicly bid contracts when the public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. Um, is action expected here?
No, I don't believe, no, I don't.
Okay, no, no, so, no action is expected. I'll make that a note. All right, so those not involved in that, I guess, are dismissed. Thank you for being here this evening and all your hard work.
Plot towards department has have to stay. No, I'm just kidding. They're eager to leave. Have a good night, Mr. Sanchez.
And have a great vacation.
Oh, yeah, have a great vacation. Enjoy.
Okay, so we're back in open session. No action was taken in the executive session. Yeah.